Good morning, welcome to regular session Monday, July fifteenth, the Commissioners Court. I have a full court and present carry do certify the meeting was probably posted.
Yes, sir.
Please rise for prayer and pledges.
Ben Dray.
Our Father, the Holy Son, your name. That you'll guide the these commissioners and this judge. For the President in Walker County, that you'll be in control. Father, we ask Lord, that you feed us and guide us, and may we heed your warnings and your blessing. Father, the verse one of the book today is from Psalm, chapter one, I mean, chapter forty, verse one and two. It says, I waited patiently for the Lord, and he inclined unto me and heard my cry. He brought me up also out of the marble pit, out of the mire clay, and set my feet upon a rock and established my goal. Father, we want to say all praise to you, thank you for realizing that we're in a mess, and Father, that you can, are the one that can set us on a solid rock. Father, may we search for that rock, may we find that rock through your word, and may you guide and direct us, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
United States of America, as a republic, which stands one nation, under God. Texas, by the state of the city, Texas, one state, under God, one.
I didn't receive any citizens input. A consent agenda contains twenty items.
You gonna pull one and deal with that?
You like anything else?
I don't.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, moving, removing number one.
Moving, seconded, on favor, raise your hand, motion carries. I know one approval minutes of Commissioners Court.
So, I'm wanting to, oh, Commissioner, I can't, um, twenty-two, no, it's, it's, on the budget, president, or, you know, the last word is sure, I'm sure that's off your, corrections off your shift. I like motion, that's for those corrections.
Moving, seconded, on favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Number twenty-one, discuss and take action on extension of disaster deck, Hurricane Barrel, that's my motion.
Second.
On favor, raise your hand. Twenty-two, discuss an approval order twenty twenty-four dash six eight, amending the budget for fiscal year ending September thirty to twenty.
You have your list on your, first item is re, uh, moving three hundred thousand from general public tenancy, a plan of, pardon, twenty-seven, value to the hospital, uh, free bank control, vehicle repayments. Second one is reporting, uh, revenues received from the state and corresponding expenditure. The next four are, yeah, four. Uh, are moving money from the central legal fees to, uh, the different courts. Voter registration, uh, recording, uh, state funds and the corresponding expenditure. Then we get to road and bridge, the, uh, recording of a million dollars in FEMA disaster funds, uh, expected to be reimbursed for, uh, ongoing expenditures that are in process now. And then in each of the precincts, two hundred and fifty thousand of that one million, and then also recording the two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, that was transferred from the, uh, capital projects, so a total of five million, uh, basically, uh, advanced type funds on the FEMA expenditures total for each precinct. Then recording, uh, some miscellaneous revenues. EMS fund, uh, recording some insurance proceeds, some grant funds, uh, and then, uh, some contingency transfers in that fund for the, uh, for vehicle repairs. And then for the ambulances that were purchased. Sheriff Grant, uh, recording, uh, well, nothing, I'm sure, uh, in the archive fund, kind of court archive fund, uh, uh, use of designated funds. Harvey, we got some, uh, some of the money in, and we're recording the amendments there. Projects Fund, uh, reclassifying and extending floor in the facilities budget, and then, uh, the revenue sharing funds. Capital Projects Fund, the recording, uh, the, uh, the million dollar transfer and re, transfer FEMA, made a receivable from FEMA there.
Any questions?
Under the Harvey Grant stuff, Tricia, I mean, at one point there, we had some money left in each precinct, and then we let Brandon use it. We need to look at that, I mean, those, those dollars, and let's see what we need to do to put them back where they belong.
Okay, there was about a hundred and forty thousand received, which if divided among the four precincts would be luckily thirty-five thousand each. Several ways to handle it, uh, one way would be in the, uh, six hundred thousand that's being transferred out of the general fund this year to, uh, all change it through that, rather than there being an equal distribution, that there be a staggered dis- distribution to make up for the thirty-five each going to the three. Or basically however court wants to handle.
We get into that during budget, so.
Thank you, motion.
Motion to approve.
Sure. Moving, saying it all on favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-three, discuss and take action on purchase of mobile handheld radios for just a little piece precinct one, three, and four.
So we got the request to, uh, to replace the handheld radios for the JP's, um, and we've already done there, so.
Can this come out of the justice phone, or we have to?
IT, IT, JP IT funds.
Give me, I make the motion to approve agenda item twenty-three, yes, present.
Out of, out of, uh, API, IT, out of JP, API IT funds.
Moving, seconded, on favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-four, discuss and take action on reapportment of Claire Malik and James Mayberry Senior to the Board of Commissioners, Walker County Housing Authority for a two-year term, but be my motion. Second, move on, favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-five, discuss and approve changes to the ambulance billing write-off and collection policy, authorizing notification to ambulance billing service provided for policy providing content.
I have a little concern about, first big underline, what County Annual Service, owing special consideration, you have an, uh, administrative review. This, these customer service concerns will be reviewed by EMS chief or Commissioners Court designee for final disposition. And presented to Commissioners Court as needed. That's that big. Well, um, not, what, what's Miss Parker's title?
EMS chief.
For some reason, I thought it was EMS director.
We changed that name about, what, six months ago or so, yeah, we did change her name.
About a year ago.
Not long.
So that, that helps.
Okay.
Then you have the chief without the authority for the chief to have a designate. In other words, only Miss Parker can do this, no one else in her office can do this. And furthermore, if you're going to have the chief and even allow her deputy to do it, then you have this Commissioners Court designate. So you have two people with concurrent authority, and what if one of them thinks, it needs to be a write-off, and the other one thinks it doesn't need to be a write-off? You see what I'm saying? So I'm just wondering if you could maybe explore, discuss how you intend for that to operate.
We are, if I get out of line hot right here, if I, if I wander off course, we're trying to move financial decisions away from the operating side, so that they don't call our EMS chief and say, can I write off this two hundred dollar account? So that's why it says customer service concerns, like, hey, you know, this happened, what can we do about it? That's directly her, it's her, it's her people, it's her staff, she's taking care of all that. I don't, well, our, the committee that, that we were sitting with didn't feel like putting her in position to make write-off decisions was really part of what her role, that's more on the finance side.
So I have something to add, so I wasn't involved in any of this, I have not seen any of this.
Right.
I have not been invited to any committee meetings, um, this is the first time I'm seeing this. I am the administrator of record for the EMS department, which means I have to be in the loop with all compliance, finance operations of this department for the state of Texas. So I would ask that any, moving forward with any of the billing stuff, I am included at that table. I, they go hand in hand, finance and operations for my department.
Yeah, and I agree with that, in fact, we have another session today to talk about moving forward. So this was something we were going to put in place, um, as far as collections and write-offs and stuff like that, um, it, it's going to go to whoever we proceed with, with our next piece of it right now, so it's basically just, I'm cleaning up who can, or who should do what, because really, it puts us in a, in a, in a weird spot to have a, even though it's a department head, making financial decisions for the county, and you really, actually, really shouldn't be, call Rachel and find out this is a write-off, should be, what is the policy of a write-off? And we, we kind of clarified that with some, adjusting some numbers in there, and it fits that parameter that it can be taken care of. So, so that's separate from the, the customer service concerns, and, um, and I think, I think we have some financial stuff down in here too, yeah, internal collection and stuff, so, anyway, um, I'm good with it, it's, um, pretty basic, I think it's a lot more simple, and, um.
Commissioner Bamego, my, my concern is that there are two people with identical authority, and if they disagree, what's the resolution method of?
The, the logic is, we have to have a fallback.
They'll come to court.
Yeah, it says, and presented to Commissioners Court as, if needed.
Okay, so, let's say that Miss Parker says this is a write-off, and the Commissioners Court designate says, no, this is not a write-off.
This is all, all her.
If presented to Commissioners Court, that's what we can.
This is, the customer service portion is not a financial decision, it's strictly performance stuff, hey, I have a problem with this, I have a question with that. So, if she's not here, she's not available, we have to have a fallback, we could say the EMS chief or her designate, but we at court should have some oversight as to who that designate is.
Right, I, yeah, I, I agree with your thing about it being customer service concerns, so.
I mean, we're open to other things, but we authorize her, and the only other way to go further be to authorize her, and then her, give us her designate, which I guess could happen, another title.
In, in the sense that that's more in line with what you do with all the other departments that you should provide.
All right, I mean, so the wording could just be EMS chief or her designate, and then, uh, for final decision, position, disposition, and we can still leave the bottom line if we need to, as a, as a mediation, come to customer cert, come to Commissioners Court if it needs to. All right, I'm, I'm, I'm all right with that, I'm okay.
Make that work.
I'll make that, yeah, I may ma- make that motion to modify that language under administrative review to eliminate Commissioners Court designate, make it EMS chief or their designate.
Oh, second, yeah.
Any other questions, my servants?
With those corrections.
The motion was just to amend that, are you, are you going to do a motion to approve the whole thing yet?
Yeah, yeah, prove the, yeah, prove the entire.
Amendments.
Yeah, prove the entire document with the stated amendment.
About?
As it.
I got a motion.
Second.
Second, moving second on, favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-six, discussing presentation of potential project by our house consulting incorporated in Spirit Point Engineering within Walker County. This workshop is for informational purposes and discussion, and does not represent, nor is it based on the actual application for a permit, a submitted plan to develop real property or a submitted plat- application.
The developer has asked for, to come before Commissioners Court for the workshop, where they can present, as a, you know, with other developers, where they want to talk to you about their projects, and some things that they're thinking about, and, you know, to kind of get forward up to speed with what they're looking at, and be able to answer questions, or, you know, whatever the court has. Allow for some discussions, discussion item only, there's not any action, requesting court today, thinking before court takes any action on some of the stuff you're going to discuss today, you probably want some legal counsel on it, maybe some experience here in counsel, but this will get them all on, so. It's their presentation, they're here today, okay, or, start the ball roll.
Renee is at Nafkin's office, I text her, because she didn't realize.
Yeah, we were going to pass.
Get over here now, so, I think they're rushing over right now, I mean, I can, uh.
We, we can go to twenty-seven, you ready for twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, unfortunately, I might want to beat a table, uh, they did not complete all their stuff.
So we passed on twenty-seven anyway.
Yeah, so we'll get, we'll give Renee a few minutes.
I mean, we can get, you know, we can get started, I mean, I know pretty much.
We have a budget workshop.
How long's the budget workshop, Patricia?
A while.
Oh, wow.
Said we could go. Jacob said we could go.
So what? Yeah, y'all, we can get started. This.
Well, Jerry just walked in, and so Renee ought to be right behind him, so, maybe a couple of minutes here, everybody's right behind me, he got all the way down here and had his pocket knife in his pocket.
Oh, no.
I don't know what y'all have, I was, but I will hand y'all.
Morning, sir.
Morning, morning, y'all doing all right?
Yeah, we on top of the world.
That man's supposed to be nice, you must have power back.
Oh, I never lost power, my generator come on.
Oh, with you. Yeah, that's how the other happened. I've got first world problems, I just need my draft papers to open back up. That is the Estates of Texas Grand. This is Legacy Ranch that we're, we're counting as well, we should discuss. What's your, yes, the R O, M C C, R O, are you? You said or done it? Okay. I guess we'll start with the Estates, uh, the Estates of Texas Grand is the last section of Texas, and, um, we've already done section one with the city and ETJ. Um, it falls within the city of Huntsville, CT, and, uh, we typed out the section, I don't know about it, and releases from C C N, or not release from C C N, release from the ETJ and, and being so in the water, being provided by the city. We've talked to Aaron, Aaron's generally on board with that, um, one of the things, you know, we're, we're just trying to prevent having two bodies, right now, we design everything to the city standards, and then y'all get stuck with whatever they say they want, and, you know, trying to simplify that. So we've, we've talked to the city, the city's generally on board, and what Renee's wanting to accomplish and make sure before she goes in, for the annexation from the ETJ is that we can go develop this as close to we did with Texas Grand as possible, even though the regulations have come into play, um, that's going to take either some variances or development agreement, or, you know, whatever avenue that, you know, y'all want to take, that satisfies everybody to get it done, um, you know, I know there's some right-of-way widths, lot dimensions, you know, there's a few minor deals like that, it's still all one acre plus lots, um, but essentially, the, the goal is, is going to be to deliver something exactly like what we did at Texas Grand. And I think, you know, Renee wants to just, you know, go through that, I mean, we, we can get into some of the specific specifics if you want to, or, you know, just kind of, I think everybody's familiar with, you know, what we've done and how we got there, and, you know, the, the quality of the product, um, just make sure that we can continue doing the same thing. I was on the email channels, I'm through the city, yes, sir, I know Aaron was sitting in a representative with the city today, uh, they've been looked in all of these conversations, uh, you know, this whole time, so, I don't know, if you have any questions, I know, you know, for the city or whatever, we, we brought them, she brought them as well. Also, she walks in the next couple of minutes.
If I could move the line, we'd sit it forward.
So, you know, I, I mean, as far as from a contractor standpoint, you know, it, it does, it greatly help that, you know, the county had, when it was from the very beginning, instead of, you know, we finish project, get a completion from the, from the city, and then we move, you know, then we do a year completion of the city, and then they release us, and then we come to y'all, and, you know, and Andy's doing his job, he's doing, hey, we need these tickets, we need this, we need that. It just gets very, you know, and y'all been in some of the, I know Commissioner White has been there the whole time during Texas Grand, that gets very, very time-consuming, it's, it's real hard to go back and, and try to figure out what we did a year after, as much as, as much as we've got going on, hey, well, you know, where's the tickets, these stable, like, sand tickets, we'll try to keep them, we've got a program now to keep them, but, uh, it's just a lot, so, you know, if we can, if we can have one master to serve, it would be amazing, because y'all end up, anyway, y'all can take a maintenance bond, and we get a maintenance bond every time, even though the city or county won't take it, uh, we get one every time, case something did happen.
That's typical government.
I, I don't, you know, I don't.
I don't say I like it, that could, but I mean, it's, yes, it is what it is.
No, I mean, it's, it's, you know, and so, like I said, it would be nice to have, if we have a, you know, like, we're pouring a big, uh, creek crossing section one right now, big, massive box covered, you know, to have, you know, oversight from the, you know, the county's input, because they're going to be the ones that are going to own it, you know, we're pouring, you know, monolithics, so it's, it's coming in, and taking pictures, and we got all the test reports, and, you know, engineers sending somebody out to inspect it, you know, and the county, I mean, the city does come out there and inspect it, come by and inspect it, I'm not saying they don't, but y'all ultimately, they want something to take it, so, uh, I would like to y'all, if y'all don't like something, it's, it's a lot cheaper to do it while we're doing it than a year and a half later. Example of that is like under the bridge there, you know, there's a few things that they didn't hear, didn't like about the bridge, even when the county accepted it, and we're all back, and we're touching them up and fixing them, but that's going to have been called at the beginning. Andy, you got anything to add, I know it kind of helps on your end as well.
Yeah, so, essentially, the couple of projects we're looking at, both of them are ETJ area projects, um, I believe, I'll let Renee speak for herself, that their idea would be to administratively use the law to remove those projects from the ETJ, and then submit them, then it would be outside of our ETJ agreement, in our jurisdiction, then once they're in our jurisdiction, they would submit them to Commissioners Court as an application.
I believe Legacy Ranch has already been on ETJ.
Yes, that may be drive, you guys know better than I do, so, so when that happens, then jurisdiction over, and then proceeding forward with, with how or what, and I think what they're here today to do is talk to you about. My office's standpoint, I, uh, uh, wouldn't has looked at developers agreement, like the one with the city, um, um, there may be some issues with the county doing something similar to that, just because of statutes with the city, the statute with the county are not the same, but, uh, maybe, uh, variances to our, if they are looking to do something other than what's in our current code, uh, I can, I notice variances, multiple variances to the forward.
Doing better, he says, on a master plan approval, so that we don't have to come back with every section and ask y'all for the exact same thing.
I think that's another thing she wants to kind of open up, looking forward, it's the idea, right now, when we do our application, section by section, um, trying to do something where, uh, she can, uh, get a variance or go through a process to sort of submit, um, some master planning on some of these submissions, was not typically what we do, or built into our some of those regulations.
So we've mentioned. So we, we've mentioned a couple of times, we might need some variances, some changes and stuff like that, one of the benefits about being inside the ETJ is you can have narrower lots, and I don't know about right-of-way widths, if they, if you have something different.
Sixty foot still in the city.
Okay, so we're, we're seventy in the county, and then our lots are, and this one, these are a hundred and twenty-five, upper.
These are a minimum of one acre lots, so they're bigger ones. They're, they're one acre minimum, but I think there's some of them, you may know better than I do, that are, you know, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty foot, that don't quite hit that hundred and twenty-five foot threshold. And a lot of them are cul-de-sac lots, I don't know, they might jump in here at any time, I mean, there's some, a few that are, you know, cul-de-sac, and some other ones may be.
Numbers in front of me, I mean, we ran all the numbers on all the lots.
Yeah, it's a small percentage of them that we're talking about, need to call, or if you take out cul-de-sac lots. And, and, you know, right-of-way widths, uh, you know, also utilities, I mean, they're the same, uh, I mean, we still leave the right, you know, big, you, you know, utilities, that's on each side, uh. Right now, it's playing with sixty foot right-of-way, twenty foot utility and drainage, he's been down both sides of that, um. Man, has that given y'all any problems on anything in the past, or, I mean, it would be detrimental for us to go back and read. It would be detrimental for us to go back and read master plan at, at this point, just to widen the right of ways ten foot, but.
We will, we've been flexible on existing subdivisions. We're eight hundred people have sixty foot and one guy buys a lot in the middle. And we are, you know, we say you go to seventy, we're like, well, that's kind of silly. You got three hundred and ninety-nine people on each side of you that don't. A new development coming in. This changes our rules. We can't tell the next guy. You can, you can, you have to have seventy.
Section one's already flooded with sixty foot and where it ties into Texas Grand, sixty foot. So you'd have three sections in the middle. That were seventy foot.
Right. The next guy that comes in that wants a sixty foot, a seventy foot right away or sixty foot right away. We have to tell him, we just let a thousand houses come in or two thousand, I haven't noticed this, fifteen hundred houses come in with sixty foot right away. Yeah, this is one, this, this is starting on, so I'm gonna assume this is.
Now, but Legacy's separate. It's like.
I thought we had to. So seven hundred with the two, four, five, so seven hundred something houses. In a subdivision, how do we tell the next guy with fifty of them that, no, you gotta do seventy? So I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not a fan of that. That changes our rule. It's not a variance for a single track. It's seven hundred tracks. I mean, I'm just one vote, but that's my thought.
Your thought. You taking them.
Just kind of waiting on Renee to get here.
Okay.
They're stalling anyway. Can't you see the stall in them?
Well, I'm high level talking, but.
There you go.
Yeah, this is all a stall tactic till she gets here anyways.
But if you bring down that spike, I mean. The last time Commissioner Ford was ever this short. It's bearish.
We never like.
This is a bar ditch, um, asphalt.
Yeah, this takes us, as, um, what are we doing today? Twenty-six foot? Asphalt. Soap and ditch.
It's the same as all those sections. You know, the Estates was planned back, you know, it's planned, you know, a few years ago. Before the other regulations and everything, it was already, you know, we already submitted plans and all that.
To the city.
And that was to the city. But basically, when we're talking about the Estates, we're just talking about, do y'all want? This project, it was basically from a couple of years ago. Do y'all want to have oversight on the next three? Sections and do y'all want to have, because eventually we come to you anyway. Do you want to have oversight? You know, that's the, that's the question. So our, our minimum road outside the ETJ. Thirty-two feet on paved surface or is it, what is our minimum route? I try to keep.
It's open ditch. We're twenty-six foot paved.
Okay, alright.
It's thirty foot shoulder to shoulder.
Yeah, yeah.
You have two foot. So that. That's our typical, or that's our sort of lowest. Open ditch subdivision standard. You know, like our, our, our low, low, low volume.
And we've got Lone Star. Road that's the arterial through the middle that's, it's already significantly wider. It's already approved through y'all, through the city. Um, it's already taken care of and then everything's sort of gone that.
Back to what I said a minute ago, this was. And, and delivered to the city. For our rules, subdivision regulations change.
It was planned and delivered to the city before the option to opt out of the ETJ was a thing. And, you know, this, this plan's I've had for three or four years, maybe five now. Um, you know, what we, the way that we kind of saw it was. We can stay in ETJ and do whatever the city minimums are and y'all are stuck taking it, or we can come. You know, talk to y'all, talk about what we want to do, what we want to deliver that. And, and get y'all involved in it and get a say so from.
And this, and this all stems from, from contractor wise and stuff and, and even engineering wise, we just would like to have. One master to serve. You know, and, and that's where the idea started coming ahead. And then when the, when the city was open to it and they said, hey, this sounds like a good idea to us, we. We don't have nothing to do with the roads anyway. They want to keep utilities, which is completely warm and stuff like that oversight of that. That's where this was kind of born from. We can keep doing exactly what we're doing. Yeah, I mean, that's, and still do it like we've done through all the, the. But we would like to move over and I know Andy has expressed that he would, you know, would definitely support it because they would have oversight from the front end.
And even with section one, Andy reviewed and approved the drainage because it was floodplain related and the city reviewed and approved everything else. So we were still. You know, going back and forth between both entities.
And, and there's also some fees that would probably help, that would go to y'all instead of go to the city. That's, you know, significant amount of money too.
Let me clarify a couple of things.
Go ahead.
Um, A, we reviewed floodplain. City reviewed drainage for section one. That's one. Did review drainage in relation to floodplain regulation. They did drainage in relation to subdivision. But, uh, just minor point, but I want to be clear since we're all the record here. Number two, uh, from our office's standpoint, um. What, what we, our current load is on these developments is if we look at. The development permit, which is our floodplain regulations. And then we participate with the Commissioners Court. In the review of the roads when they're taking in for maintenance at the point that they're taking our maintenance. That's our two touches on a project like this, the ETJ. Obviously, um, I, I, I'm not supporting or against anything. This is for the courts to decide, but obviously from our standpoint. Uh, if we become, if the court becomes fully involved, if we're actually processing the application. Then our involvement will increase significantly. We will be, we will then be reviewing drainage. We will then be reviewing roads. Will there be reviewing all those things? And to their point, there have been several instances, I think the whole court's aware of this. It's not, I think it becomes shocking. There have been several instances where we've received a product that's already been approved, already done. And the Commissioners, uh, precinct that has said, uh, review can, inspection committee had some issues that we needed resolved. And were being resolved. Later on, right? Or in some cases, couldn't be resolved to the satisfaction of the Commissioner, but we lived with them. Right? And so there, there are some issues like that. I, I will admit, you know, there are, um, there. As far as the back and forth that they have to now deal with. Um, yes, administratively, uh, they have sort of two, two different groups that they're going back and forth to. On, on the projects, I can see from their standpoint. Add some, uh. Add some paperwork, some workload. Um.
Renee invited.
I was told ten o'clock. I apologize.
I don't have any, I don't have any opposition to. To the dropping out of the ETJ, uh, yeah, ETJ and then, and us being the primary oversight. The part that I have an issue with is that this is the very first time we've ever had this conversation. The first thing on their mouths is we need very, we need variances to make it work. When the next guy's coming in. And we're not going to let him bring an entire plat that needs very existent to survive. That's not fair to the next developer. And if, I will say this, I'm, and Renee, correct me if I'm wrong, we did review it and Andy, and Andy even asked with versus the old regulations, which would have been, this would have been under the old regulation. It needs almost zero variances. And then under the new one, it would need more than a few because of, it's just done differently. It's done under a different set of regulations with the city. So as far as like a bunch of variances, I mean, every development of this size is going to need a few, but I don't believe that it's going to be an absolute, an astronomical. You know, large amounts of.
No, about, and I can address specifically. And I think also, as you know, Andy. Mentioned to me, he said, okay, so let me understand this. If you D N X, we have two choices. Where either you're going to do the development agreement with the city of Huntsville and we're going to take it over as you did at Texas Grand Ranch. Or we can get D N X. And ask for the same standards as we currently have in our development agreement. And then you get to have some control to construction process. Typically, the variances that we're asking for. All the lots are one acre or larger. Not all of the lots are going to meet the hundred and twenty-five foot. Minimum road frontage under the rural classification. There's some that are a hundred and nineteen, a hundred and nine, and I'm going to say about twenty percent plus or minus. Uh, we're going to require the same variances we got for Texas Grand Ranch. Um. The three-one width depth ratio. I think there's probably about ten percent of those lots that are going to require a variance because they're going to make, maybe be a four to one. And then there's cul-de-sac lots that aren't going to meet the minimum. So, I mean, we're not asking for. You know. Some major change. We're simply asking that we go under the rural classification. Even though we don't meet all the road furnages, but all of the acreages are one acre. And if, I'm just going to bring it up. I argued that point extensively. When you guys were doing the regulations, that I thought that was somewhat unreasonable, that that's how you classify. So that's going to be the number one variance that we're going to need is to be classified as rural.
Okay.
So I'd like to hear, you, you're represented from the city? I, I'd like to hear your take on all this, so.
Kevin Mile, I'm the director of.
I've never met you, so I didn't know who you, exactly who you were.
Uh, I'm the director of Development Services for, for the city of Huntsville. Um, I've, I've been in conversations, uh. Uh, throughout this, the discussion about, uh. Being D N X from our ETJ, um, is, is what's mentioned. The city doesn't have, uh, an issue with that or, uh. We've sent the, uh. Development agreement back to our city attorney or it's going to be sent back. I'm not sure if it's made it there yet. Just make sure that there's not a conflict. Uh, in there, might need an amendment to that development agreement to, to, uh, move forward with that. Uh, disannexation of the, the ETJ. Um, absolutely what they've said, they, you know, a dual review process that they've been dealing with, uh. Uh. It, it doesn't, uh. Isn't going to cause any heartburn with this.
Uh, I, I'm curious. We've got, uh, projects like this going on. Why, why all of a sudden? Has the city, uh, changed their view?
Well, it was the, uh, state legislature that, that passed the law to allow the de-annexation. This is on a furthest southern boundary, uh, in the annex, uh, in the development agreement. Um, we're prohibited from, uh, trying to pursue any annexation. If I remember, it's thirty-five or forty years, something like.
Yeah.
Actually twenty, but it is renewable.
Well, y'all took enough from this last round anyway. I know you didn't have nothing to do with that, but. Y'all took plenty.
Well. I guess as it progresses, I'm still going to have quite a few questions, so.
And it's a, uh, action that our city council, uh, would need to approve to, to complete that disannexation.
But y'all's agreement's in place, right? I mean. What she's, uh, Renee, you back to.
Yeah.
I mean, what you're saying, I mean, you're wanting to build. In the county, I mean, and deal with us. The agreement you have with the city. And we're going to take the roads at the end anyway.
We're building anyway, so.
So regardless, I mean, I.
We're just trying to skip some of the, he said, that, you know, the two masters do.
I, uh, from our side, my strong suggestion, well, as we, if you. If you decide to move forward, this, obviously today is not a decision-making day. But if you guys decide, I, I would strongly advocate from a, um. Uh, review standpoint. That we sort out. The code, uh, the, using the county code, the existing code. And then if you're going to grant variances, instead of saying. We're going to develop it under the developers' agreement, the same standards that were required in the developers' agreement, which is going to end up making us do a review of the city standards. Right? That's a, that, variances to the city standards that were offered in the development agreement, but let's refer. For us to do a review under county standards with those variances applied to county standards, if given those two choices. Because our review teams are very familiar with our standards. And not to Kevin's, right? And so it would pose a lot, it would be the same for him. Wouldn't want to pick up our code and start trying to do reviews on that tomorrow. It's going to slow him down. It's going to slow his team down. It's going to make things more inaccurate. So, I think if we move that way, that would be the way, right? Our standards, what do they need? From our standards, so that we have a clear idea of what we're.
And, and to the question about how, why the city changed their position on this, not only the legislature changed the, the laws, but. The, the whole idea with the ETJ was at, at some point that was going to be annexed into the city. So that's why the state grants that slimmish. Development review capabilities. Um, and then sometime in the not too distant future, we would annex that in. It would meet our standards. So. The state is really hamstrung with cities, uh, throughout the state in terms of annexation, uh. Who, who knows what that's going to look like in the future, but, uh, we're, we're, we're not. Most of this annexation's up.
I think. Yeah, I, I personally don't. We're going to take them anyway, under the standard that you're there. So, I mean, it'd be better if we was looking at them daily. That's my position on it. I don't know about the rest.
I don't dispute any of that. I have no trouble with the city dropping out. That's taking it over. I just, I'm just troubled by a brand new, even though it's two years old, it's our first pass, first instance. We're not going to be able to build to your standards.
Well, they can stay with the city and they're going to build the same way anyway.
You said it yourself, Bill. When I argued, you said, but you just come in and get a variance, Renee. And I said, look, I don't want to be the guy who runs your dog over and then comes in and asks for a variance. And that's what I'm hearing right now.
Variance for individual tracks and individual pieces is different than seven hundred and two hundred, seven hundred and fifty.
We were talking about subdivision regulations.
Two miles.
You said that, Bill. We were not talking about me bringing in an individual lot.
Right. Well, you know where I'm at. It's just, I'm just one person. Y'all know where I'm at, so. I think it's just discussion anyway, right?
Yeah, it's just a discussion anyway. We can't do any more than, than this.
We don't, we don't even thoroughly have jurisdiction over this project. This is just a discussion.
Okay. Yeah, we're trying to do this to make the whole process something. And save time, save any time, save less time, so even, actually. Y'all actually make money off of it. So if we don't do it, I'm going to definitely do it, you know, keep going with the city. I mean, we haven't been on the place. It's just. It's something to talk about with Commissioner White, you know, I mean, he's been at all these meetings and stuff. I mean. Just. It just would make everything cleaner and more streamlined, but as, as his words, it's going. I wouldn't expect anything different.
I've got other words too, but I'll wait and say them later.
Any feedback or questions that can. Like to see after, if this does move forward. Getting those out, with as much of that out today, you know, obviously the detailed ones, because we will have extreme detail workshop. But if you have some general questions or concerns, this is a good time to raise them.
Yeah.
And it may be good to point out, Bill, it's technically two tracks. You'd be granting the variances on, because it's already flooded with the north half and south half, and that plat was reported. Nineteen with the Lone Star road flat when it flooded the right of way in the two reserves. Twenty-seven. Um, and then, you know, we would be tying into six, but either ways on both sides of the development. It would be. Inconsistent with the existing developments that it would be tied into.
Well, we're dealing with a subdivision right now that went through the city. Ain't even close to our stuff. He was out there on the road with me, Bill.
Was, yep.
And. It would be nice to be able to deal with it upfront.
That's where the idea was born from.
Just telling you, it is what it is.
Performance bond, which are payable to the city of Huntsville because they're the reviewing agency. When they release those and we go to a maintenance bond, Andy can't accept that maintenance bond, even though it's made out to you. So it sits in Jacob's desk. Um, you know, so if you ever needed to. Call that bond, I, I don't know that you.
Don't call me, I guess.
I don't know you have a right to call it. I don't know if you, if you don't have a right to accept it. So it seems like it would make sense.
Well, let's say that's the part of government that's BS too. Crap. Yeah.
Alright.
To be clear. I can't read one. Sound like I'm choosing that. Our requirement for the bond is through our subdivision regulations.
Yes, and that's understandable. I understand the side of it. It's, it's bullshit. It's what it is.
Could we get a? Could we get a map made up that shows what you would be looking for, kind of eyeball variance wise?
Do in terms of the lot standards, um. And then there's another, um, one that I've done regarding.
We actually.
And that kind of.
Amy in my office actually went through and checked every lot for everyone, so we know how many lots. Needed, how many don't. Can't read, so you don't even. I didn't burn your glass. So that's what I, that's why I said that. Can't see the reading. So the road, the road width, the road right of way width is honestly, being saying everything else is just. The depth with. Of the. Lot or the red front of the lot, which it's minimal.
I might go over this. So. We like this.
So as you see, B two, start at the top, B two, one, um. Standard lots, not flag lots or cul-de-sac lots. So we would need nineteen percent of those lots do not fit. The, uh, what have you been talking about? That's the hundred and twenty-five foot frontage. So thirty-one out of a hundred and fifty-five lots don't fit.
But you got some here, like the eighty-four foot, eighty-five foot. Which ones are you looking at? Nine degrees, the same page. Where it breaks down a lot, frontages.
Where it breaks down a lot, frontages.
We go to the map and look at those, Danny, those are kind of the ones that come off.
Okay. Not cul-de-sac, but.
But yeah, so the average width of them is hundred and seven feet, we are asking for a hundred and twenty-five, that's average of a hundred and sixty-five lots, that's. You're asking about.
So basically, two hundred and five lots in section two, thirty-two of those would require variance.
Right, but of the two hundred and five, thirty-eight cul-de-sac lots, or flag lots and. Reserves in there as well.
So there was including.
They have others listed back there that that are not in cul-de-sacs, back in the back. So two point two, if you go down to the second one on the front page, B two one, there's depth with. So there's only three percent of those, five out of a hundred and sixty-five, or five out of a two hundred and five. You take out the cul-de-sac and flag lots, six out of one sixty-six, so only five of those don't meet the depth to width. About two point three.
That's five lots, the staff have a width. With fifty feet, no portion of the lot shall have a width of less than fifty feet.
So and the flag lots are all reserves, so that's not anything.
They're done. Those are in the five acre leave outs for the whole bands that we added, and the drill sites.
And then two point four would be the cul-de-sac lots. Uh I think there's supposed to have fifty feet, we added almost forty-three feet. So there's a few of them, they're thirty-nine something. But that's probably, that's probably actually the biggest one would be the cul-de-sac lots, as far as the percentage was, some of those would not meet your current standard.
Five percent, Mike. Five percent, B two four. It came five and six.
So really, I mean, honestly, the sixty foot right away thing's gonna be the biggest. The rest of this is just what you see right here, that's the only, so when we take what? From a, from a plaque standpoint, I can't see.
Mike, that's five, not fifty-eight.
Yeah, it's not fifty-eight.
Yeah, when you go to five, six, it just says five percent, somebody put an eight in there. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's just five percent.
I didn't, I didn't do this, I did approve it, so I guess.
I guess what it is, Mike, it always falls back to us, man.
Makes it look a little better, when you jump that much.
That's it.
What I'll do is I'll make a summary of this, I asked to get it in Excel, I'll make a summary, just even I. The logic of it is a little difficult to follow, so I can appreciate anybody's confusion.
And again, we're not approving anything today, but if we have a. If it's something that, now I know there ain't a vote or anything, but if it's something y'all wanna pursue, you know, we can run through and and put a whole bunch of stuff together. We don't wanna spend that time and effort unless it.
Is there anything different that doesn't meet their?
A few minor things, um, you know, road slopes percentages and all, but I think we can adhere to most all of that. I think the biggest thing would be the front and back slopes to. Stick to what we've been doing in the past on that.
So if you wanna pass those out.
So and I I think Jerry did it too, but also from those, and y'all probably care more about the construction getting flat, but we took the whole flat and reviewed it ourselves based on. Rural standards, the Walker County regulations and so, these are the things we need to bring. That and the road. So I don't know. What Jersey has on.
Some of it is also a little bit of a little bit of lock configuration stuff.
Yeah, I think the biggest one is the.
Four to one front slope.
Get the six to one where we can, but we can get over to areas that we couldn't.
Yeah, that's one reason we write and widen the right of ways, so they could make the six to one and eight to one or whatever.
But we've got a twenty foot parallel, and he's been along both sides too, so.
I'm one to one, I'll tell her. Yeah, I just think it's a one to one.
Yeah, it at least, maybe. All right.
Yeah, Lone Star Road is not, not already a ninety foot round.
Yeah, I was thinking.
Turning lanes and all that, it's a lot louder. It's got turning lanes and all this stuff.
So really, what we're talking about is the internal roads, we're not talking about that main collector.
And the power's underground like Deer Forest, it's not like Texas Grand, okay, underground power. You know, so how speed.
In the utility easement or in the county?
In the utilities.
I'm looking at Scott when I say that too. Utility easement, right, Scott?
That was, that was the city requiring it to be inside the right way anyways, wasn't it?
Yeah, they already, when we're, I mean, what do we say, six foot, seven foot, outside the right of way?
No, I don't like water lines.
Is a secondary entrance or? That's one that runs parallel. How big of a right way is it? Lone Star is, man.
This is like sixty, the section.
Oh, no.
It's gotta get up. He just wasn't getting a little color and talking.
Other than Lone Star, they're all sixty.
One other thing, I don't know if it's on that, uh if it's on the map you're looking at.
But I see what you're saying about.
Years ago, there was talk of twenty-two ninety-six coming across, and we actually looked real heavy doing that. That was previous court and the court was involved in all that, and then it kind of fell by the wayside. But long story short, we are leaving that that land out. I don't think it'll be why Renee owns it. But we are gonna leave it, leave a spot that would line up, and it would could eventually possibly uh be there, so that's something else that's gonna happen.
Those are, those are actually already plotted with section one, it's not showing on.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, I guess that's not really up to date on.
Section one wasn't, that was on.
Now, I was, I'm gonna take off my contractor hat, put on my uh. Football president hat. They, she did give us property on this for a school site for free. I wish some, some of these other developers would do. Just a, and it's what?
Twenty.
Twenty acres for free up on the, on the I forty-five running. That was given in the way.
That's it right there to be tracked, the sports complex thing.
No, the sports stuff over here.
Yeah, I'm gonna post a code up there.
At maybe at some point, you know, it's not, it's not the current bond project and not playing, it just depends on where stuff develops and everything. But we'll have.
But the land's there.
The land will be there, which is true, you know, you ask Mike, I, you know, I talked to Montgomery, one of their presidents the other day, they said, what land? They wish that above land twenty years ago, because now they're paying ten dollars a square foot for it, but they could have paid ten thousand acre for it. And so that's one thing that we're trying to be proactive, and do whatever the SD is trying to.
So I got a different question, I was just gonna ask if Aaron was in, I was watching on Zoom, Aaron?
Aaron come in the room?
Aaron's here, I have a question for you. We know that the city of Huntsville's at forty-eight thousand, soon to be fifty thousand in the twenty, thirty census. On all the master plans that the city has, one of the things that the city wants is twenty-two ninety-six across, right?
Yes, sir. Some, some cross lane over the interstate south of what we have.
If this goes out of the ETJ, will will that affect the opinion of the city for wanting that?
The city will still have the commercial, we're only asking to de-annex the residential lots. So we don't have a development agreement with the city um on the commercial at this time anyway. So this development agreement only addresses the residential lots.
I have a question statement pertaining to that. What would happen with section one, since the city's already, it's already been done through? Is is that part of what y'all have discussed, one being removed from the ETJ?
No, it would be. Stay, yeah, one of the commercials would stay, because we've already started the process. So B two, three.
I can see the future, my nice pretty ETJ map is fixing to get real ugly. So I need to serve your compliance today, I can see the future, it's not gonna be a danger.
Yeah.
All of it in the ETJ, all of the outside of the ETJ, city still supports that project one hundred percent.
You know, kind of heard in my opinion, I mean, I'm, you can either stay where you at, or you know, and we still got what you got. Or you can move over here and we can kind of be in charge, that's kind of the way I'm looking at it. But I'm only one vote two, as Bill said, so. So you only got two opinions really up here so far.
That's it.
The purpose, and I appreciate you doing this today, because I've been asked to file the paperwork. For the de-annexation and or to do it legally, and I obviously wanted to understand where. The commissioners were on this before I did that, um. So we have a plat um and the engineering plans. That have been ready to go basically since the end of April, so. I believe probably what we'll do is file for the de-annexation and then submit the plans to Andy.
I have one area of concern, but city people are here, and I know Mr. Snyder is the one they'll need their advice on. The legislature did create, in chapter forty-two, the local government code, this option that. This houses referencing to them, I, she's absolutely gonna get her de-annexation if she wants it, but just reading the way the code is written. But they do have a valid, active developers' agreement. That requires both parties to agree to terminate. And it appears the city's not willing to oppose, but until they do. I don't know what the legal landscape looks like when there's a de-annexation over land that's actually under a valid developers' agreement. And I I believe it's resolvable, and especially if the city is. You know, on board with that, obviously Renee's gonna ask for a termination, and if the city agrees to termination, that's the city council. And so until they take that action, I would recommend that nothing be sent to Andy's office. Until, until it's done, and that's, that's all I'm doing here, just being cautious, let's make sure that jurisdictionally, everything is in line and in place. And then, and then they can go from there.
I I would tell you this, Renee. Read this court, you know where I stand, but you hadn't heard from everybody. You might wanna stay where you at, if you don't like what this court says.
Possible.
So I'm just, you know, I'm just making the caution to you all.
Yeah, I mean, I said that we're, we're trying to do this to streamline stuff.
I understand.
It's really, you know, the benefit to us is, is it takes time and it takes a lot of effort on our office, with engineering, construction and all. I mean, that's basically it. I mean, we serve one master instead of two.
I'll give you my opinion. If it's in his precinct and that's what he wants, I'm gonna side with them, because I don't do roads. They call in gripe from roads. I I reach out to each commissioner in that area. If it was in Bill's and he said he didn't want it, I'm gonna go with Bill on that side. That, that's how I'm looking at all the stuff on roads in the precincts.
Right, we have people that come in here with a mobile home park that want a five hundred foot road, and they wanna. One foot off each side, we tell them, go home and fix your road, come back and we'll address it. One little five hundred.
I get it. So. The Commissioner White's gonna have to deal with the roads, fix the roads when they wash out.
I I just believe that the county will have.
This person has to deal with it.
We gonna be gone.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're not gonna be here till we old, right, right?
You're gonna set a precedent, that's gonna be hard to step away from for the next developer, I don't care who you, who he is, where he comes from. You just gave seven hundred lots a sixty foot road right away, how come my two hundred lots have to be seventy?
If your two hundred lots wasn't, didn't have a previous development agreement in the ETJ, there's nothing subdivisions on both sides of it that match.
But you're getting, you're getting away to step away from all that, you're getting away to cash that in, and so we don't want that.
Only if we can get the other, not.
I'm saying, so, I mean, it's, to me, it's yes, it's serve one master and it's this and that, but the truth is, if you come to us without variances. Twenty something percent of these lots are going away, so there's a money deal there too, I mean, it's easier to come here. Because of whatever, but there's a financial impact of having to get into compliance that you're asking us for you to ignore, and when the next. Developer comes in and says, I need a help, I need a break, and we send them. That's not fair to the next guy, when you, when you.
He wasn't raised by my mama ever, damn.
How do you answer the next guy that comes in and says, did they hold this picture up? To hold that one up and say, look what you did for them, I need this street right here, it's all I need, it's just little eight little blocks right here at sixty feet. And you're gonna make me do seventy feet, that's what we have to do.
Did he come from the city with the developers' agreement though, Bill? I mean.
Not gonna have.
It's gonna be the same scenario.
Not gonna have a developer agreement, he's gonna walk in here like it's day one. The day they cash their development agreement out with the city, it's day one. We can't get any paperwork, like, when, just we can't get anything.
Read the court, very good.
Till they're free.
You might be better off where you're at. I'll just say.
That was a question asked. Earlier, when did, when did this date start? Did y'all turn this into the city and say, here we go, is that pre-our new?
Look, pretty sure it was nineteen.
Yeah.
When was the development during this time for all of ETG or? That's the question he's asked, is all the sections.
It was twenty twenty, the exact. And you adopted them in, what, August of twenty twenty?
We adopted them in August twenty twenty.
It was later than that, it was um.
What I'm getting at, it's just been going on out there. All of a sudden, we're jumping to.
It's going on a long time, and it's easier to come here. Without, if you don't have to give nothing up, I come here too.
Then in March twenty seventeen. When was the first?
The twenty.
Twenty nineteen, I believe. That was twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, it was after COVID.
It was June first, twenty twenty-two.
Am I got any other questions?
I do not. And then I have one other project, which I want to talk about, um Andy, do you have that? Um, and it's off twenty-two ninety-six. And that has already been de-annexed by the city, um. So it is currently in the county. This is a project of about six hundred lots on uh two thousand twenty-five acres. And average three acre lots. So this, this is, these are gonna be larger lots. Um, again, there will probably be some lots that will um. Not meet the frontage requirement, because they're cul-de-sacs or flag lots or or whatever. Uh so what we were uh looking for is a similar. Variance to the set of standards we're asking for at Texas Grand, knowing that these are larger lots.
And we've been, uh you know, we've been flexible on cul-de-sac and flag lot stuff as far as variances, because it's, you know, it's not. You can do, because a lot of your, a lot of your cul-de-sac lots, like, even I don't know if I seen it out here or not, on that picture there, I don't know that I see. You read that, Bill? Oh, yeah, I just can't see a cul-de-sac hiding on it, I see one, and it's like those are, you know, they're, they're, they, you know, they fan out so much in the back, so. You know, cul-de-sac's cul-de-sac, I'm, those, those I'm, I'm a little more open on those, because you do get sometimes even more acres if you get on. Those we, those and some flag lots, and other reserves and stuff. Those I don't have any, too much of a, of a problem, or really probably no problem with that.
So the next part of this that I wanted to talk about is, it's just a concept. I don't have a specific plan yet. But the idea would be to build, um, a rural collector road through it. And then have the individual sections be individually gated with internal private roads, which I understand are built to the same standard. It's just a thought at this point. Um, I don't know if you've done that at all. I know it's in your regulations.
Anything private is good.
I, that's what I.
But we've never built anything with a collector route. We've never built anything with a collector route that's a little like what you still.
You're asking for a public.
Public collector road and private, yeah. Well, our standards do address that to some degree, uh, that if there is a large road. Collector road through the private subdivision that the collector room probably end up being public. I don't remember the exact citation, but there is something in our code against that, because it may be used for three.
Yeah. I think one thing we had a concern on, but and it's, you know, it's early enough in the conversation. It's having just something in place to, to maintain those, the private roads. Maybe it's gonna be kind of a. Well, you have a P O A or, but then sometimes P O As, especially in this part of the world, the older ones, they've all died and now we have minefields where those roads. Used to be. So that's, that's, it'd be nice if you guys, I'm gonna create a way that we can guarantee that those roads stay. Maintain, cause our phones ring private or both. So.
Well, I can do that through my attorney that, that basically doesn't allow for the dissolution of private, uh, property owners association. So that, uh, regardless, they have to maintain the roads. That can be handled legally through a deed restriction.
Yeah, so to clarify what I was saying earlier, it, right now, our standard is, our standard. Requirements in the variance grant includes that our tier role roads. Will be dedicated to the public. Doesn't address maintenance, but it suggests they must be dedicated both. Doesn't really talk about collectors, but the same idea.
Yeah.
Dedicated, dedicated to the public could be private. Dedicated to the public means that that road, the material would be dedicated to the public. That's necessarily.
Yeah.
Okay, Renee and Lone Star are gonna go all the way to. The other subdivision.
The bridge will be the last thing that would be built.
So it will tie in.
That is the plan.
This bridge is, it is part of the, the plan. I don't see it on these pictures, but it is. I heard it's there. Here, there, not there, whatever like that.
It's, it's shown on the Lone Star Road Plan that was approved by the city.
I was just curious.
I was gonna ask, I didn't know how to ask, so I was gonna ask that.
Grab this Lone Star Road, dedicated.
We would need that. And because we're already. Yeah, we're, we're building that to the.
So they're not required to build. If they're not required to build a bridge, they'll build a bridge. They're more open to that section, cause then that's. Just don't say. I don't get an agreement. Handshake, it should become scary.
Right, I was gonna say the. So the reason that we asked for the annexation, um, was. Because again, we felt that it was easier to deal with the county than, you know, with the city. If it's, if it's a problem, because I'm not gonna. Need every single thing and I'm gonna need variances, yes. It's a problem, let me know now and we can. Go back to the city and say, hey, put us back in. Um, so I'm, I'm basically here asking that question today.
Thing is, with legacy, these regulations were in place, so we planned around them. With the states. That was planned before the regulations were adopted and that was your argument when we were having the conversations discussing the new standards going into place. And so it would, you know. It, it couldn't be accounted for because that was already planned. This one, we could account for most everything because it wasn't already planned.
The, the biggest thing again is the hundred and twenty-five feet for the rural classification. You know, I, I need to know if I've got. X number of lots that don't meet a hundred and twenty-five feet, but I have a three acre average. You know, are, are you gonna say, no, you're not getting a variance, you're gonna be the review served at the bottom line?
And you're talking about the one that's on the other side?
Yeah, twenty-two ninety-six.
That's.
So there's no, this is not me changing my ways yet, but. Well, there's no way we can say any kind of an agreement deal. I mean, I know that legally from us over here. Cause the bridge is a concern.
Let's, let's change gears. We're, we're, we're still talking about twenty-nine-six. Let's get back over here to the states.
Yeah, back in the first part. The bridge in the back is supposed to go, and that's one you're talking about, right? Eh, Randy?
That's one I was asking about, but it was tying in.
One in the back.
It'll be the exact same way it was for section fifteen. We built a bridge. Yeah, it's already bonded.
Alright, so it's, I'm gonna use the word definitely going in when.
At the end of the project. Yeah, the end of the subdivision.
Cause. Given a commit, that, that bridge is part of this project. To me, that's a benefit, not necessarily required, cause I'd heard back and forth, it's gonna be there, it's not gonna be there, it's gonna be there, it's not gonna be there, blah, 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 blah. Something like that, connecting those, giving those people another way out would be something that, that would. Make me think, hey, that's almost a deal that I could look at these other things as that's part of the deal. We're not allowed to make official deals. Can't do that. But that's a benefit to that community, it's a benefit to our county.
It's a three million dollar bridge.
I understand that. I understand. That's a huge, it's a huge project, but that's, that's a kind of a, a give me for the gotcha on that one. So it'd be something for me to consider. If it's not there, I'm gonna meet my old grumpy self.
You grumpy all the time. You want the truth, right?
That's exactly right.
So Jerry, if you can address other variants is under the fire code, um.
Are we back on legacy?
Yeah, we're back on legacy, I'm sorry.
The fire credits were. Two points of access have the greatest difference measured with any diagonal across the side apart. Obviously on this, because it's surrounded by railroad tracks and national forests, we don't quite meet that. We've got one going out, plenty of for backup. And then there's one coming out. Um, they're not quite that, half that distance apart, but they're, they're as close as we can get. And wanted to make sure that there wouldn't be. Can we?
No, you can't, they cannot make sure today.
No.
But you can discuss it.
No, what I'm saying is, can we variance the fire code in a future conversation? Are we allowed to do that? We're not, right?
But if they're saying fire code, the, that, that dual access requirement and the code that goes with it is part of our subdivision regulations. It may have implications for emergency response and fire being one of those. And they do have an E S D in New Waverly, and the E S D may have something to say about it. And they may have comments on it, as they have commented in the past to the commissioners' call. It was they review it under their fire code. Okay, we are not reviewing under a fire code. We're reviewing under subdivision.
Okay.
Our requirement is part of the subdivision.
So we're gonna do it in phases. So, so obviously for phase one, we would comply. For phase two, we would comply. For phase three, we wouldn't comply. So at that point, that gives us time to, to look at other potential access points. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Yeah. It's been brought up in court before about working with the forest service. So are we still gonna pursue that? Or they can't pursue that?
That's one, that's one of the.
What was that? Yes, are we fired?
It will be a private water system. City of Huntsville doesn't have water there.
Okay.
So, um.
But a centralized system. Okay, yeah, we like those a whole lot better than six hundred individual wells.
Yeah, oh yeah, you can hear me rattling. You're gonna put in six hundred wells though. I have a lot to say.
That'd been a good one, but we took it. We took it.
So that's really, you know, our next project that we will be at and, and just trying to get a feel again. You know, the, the rural standard is, you know, a hundred and twenty-five feet. Not all of them are gonna meet that requirement. Um.
If you call it, I did vote against that, the hundred and twenty-five feet.
Yeah, you want what, fifty?
I wanted eighty.
Eight feet?
Eighty, eighty like it used to be.
They say eight foot? I can't get my hearing shake.
So I, I have one more question about this. You said that all these are gonna be around three. Plus my eyes are bad. There's a lot of these that are one, one and a half.
Actually smaller ones that back up to the national forest. I don't remember what size they are.
I think they said average.
Average, yeah, the average is three.
Okay.
We have some larger, some five.
Look in this top corner. It broke down by the track size.
Alright. Alright.
That's all I got. Thank you, Renee.
You have a discussion on that?
Did you read the court at all? Call, call me later, I can read them.
Alright, no twenty-seven, we'll go in the budget workshop.
It'll take five minutes, Jim.
Take a rest and break.
I get eight minutes. Bill said five, eight sounds better.
Take a recess for a restroom break. I'm gonna take a recess for a rest and break. Yeah, all right, we're back. Animal Budget Workshop. Go ahead, Ms. Allen.
Where where we got at the last meeting, the budget work session, we went over the big picture over the years about to talk quite a bit about EMS. Uh, looked at the revenue picture was general fund, uh, Roden Bridge, and then looked at the supplemental requests from the departments or from the departments. Uh, court, uh, all that information over the last couple of weeks is going through that. Thought I would start today just by running back through it, just one, a real quick run through, and then we'll focus on whatever. Wants to focus on, which I'm assuming will be the. Basically, the budget, um, as presented, we had six hundred and nine thousand dollars in new revenues. This included revenues from, uh, new property, sales tax growth, and looking at all of our other sources of revenues. Uh, one of the things that we, uh, ran into this year that was a little bit different than in the past, sales tax has been flat, although in the last month, we did see a a good uptick. I think, um, a couple of, um, that may have been file, uh, filing their sales tax in other sites versus Walker County. So I I think, uh, through the judge's office, that's being looked at. Um, so hopefully we'll we'll see an uptick and and that moving back up. The the big revenue increase during the current year was interest. We've earned quite a bit more interest than we've earned in the past. Um, the question becomes, you know, is if interest earnings is an ongoing revenue, but will it grow from what it is now? Will it decrease? What will happen to the rates? So we did budget for, uh, an increase based on historical, but not, we did not budget at the rate that we're currently making. So EMS fund was the other big discussion item. The, uh, decision to move forward with the a new crew in in the Riverside area and, uh, working with that E S D was a big discussion during the year. In the current budget, uh, it is recommended, of course, that that, uh, project be funded and the estimated cost to do that is about a cent and a half on the tax rate. So the budget that was presented was presented with that tax rate. The Roden Bridge Fund, uh, was presented with, uh, two hundred thousand dollars from the new tax growth and continuing the six hundred thousand dollar one-time transfer. And then, of course, those are allocated based on the road miles and and each precinct. So that was, that was basically our starting point. The budget as presented includes the judge's recommendation for what, uh, he, uh, was presenting to be funded as part of that presented budget. And then every request was made and there was, uh, of course, decisions that were, uh, not made at the time because of the need for additional information. So, uh, I think, uh, court got quite a bit of information from the the elected officials. The, we talked about that a cent on the tax rate is equivalent to about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars based on a ninety seven percent collection rate. Although in the current year so far, we've seen, uh, our collections are a little behind last year. The, uh, there is no pay, uh, no adjustments to the pay classification in included in the numbers at this point. Uh, we we talked about that, uh, each, uh, one percent would cost about two hundred fifteen thousand in the general and Roden Bridge Fund total. EMS Fund, it would be roughly forty eight dollars.
Forty eight?
Uh, for EMS.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. The, uh, dependent coverage to the employee, uh, based on our newly quoted rates would be a hundred and fifty four dollars per year.
Did you scroll us back up? Um, if we're gonna kind of do this, we go along. I'm gonna look at line thirteen to start off with there. This, the two hundred thousand for conversation's sake. We, next year is gonna be odd for us anyway, with FEMA stuff coming in and the money we've already kind of reached over and moved over to our department. I would be willing from to say or put out there that maybe we hold off on that two hundred thousand. We have our usual five hundred or whatever. We're gonna get a wheelbarrow full of FEMA money at some point. And, um, and if times are tough, that one I'd be willing to take off the table, the extra two hundred thousand, the fifty thousand apiece or however that allocates out. And deal with the six hundred plus what we've reached in. We put almost a million in it just today.
Yeah, with us, I mean, that million really is just to fix repairs.
Yeah, yeah.
That will be paid back out of, uh, FEMA money.
Yeah, we get money back from it.
Yeah, it's funny. I'm just gonna bring this up. Ronnie brought it up earlier and I knew it was coming, but I'm gonna lose a hundred and five thousand dollars out of my budget somewhere.
So, I mean, I I'm not willing to take it out just yet.
Okay.
Till we get further into the.
I'll put a star by it.
We'll put a star and talk about it.
Put a star and talk about it. We're getting near the end and we're in.
Man, we're so far behind. I mean, it's just hard to.
Oh, it is.
Well, then we put in, you put in for another four hundred, right? On top of that, that probably is gonna be shot down, I would assume.
No, that that two hundred.
That's the two hundred.
That's the, the two hundred is the one that he put in for.
Yeah.
Or that was.
So what did you, that's not line thirteen, though.
We went ahead and cut that.
They cut it in half.
Yeah.
I mean, it's it's already cut. And, you know, we asked for four hundred, but.
It's not cut, nothing is.
Well, it's good. It's not on that board saying we got it.
Numbers that were presented.
Yeah, that's what's been.
I'm gonna put a star by that one. If we if we get within a quarter million dollars or something, that's.
Well, well, while we're right in this area, I mean, for me to move forward with the budget, what are we gonna do for the employees? If we can't, if we can't determine that, then everything's absolute no.
Right, and that's kind of.
For the rest of this whole thing.
I agree with you, and that's kind of why I was looking at ways.
You know, so.
I'd rather start there.
I mean, that's my starting point. Otherwise, everything else we do, I'm gonna just say no till we come back to it.
Well, let's go.
Scroll down to the two to three.
Looking up there, we we have, uh, the six hundred and nine to start with. What is included in what's presented, and we'll go through that list in detail, is four hundred and seventy nine thousand. So there's a hundred and twenty nine thousand of that six oh nine that is not included in the presented budget.
So that would be all you would have to allocate based on what we have here, which is nothing.
Right, and there's a long list of requests that aren't, aren't in the presented.
Like we said, I I think what I'll throw out there, we're starting off point is our, and we kind of talked about before, was two percent plus the cost of the insurance increase. So it's whatever that number is, we should throw that one up there and figure how we're gonna get to it. We gotta do, I agree a hundred percent, we got, we got, the books gotta go first. Adamant, believe me, you don't tell your people.
You know, without them blowies, I personally don't want this job. I'll just tell you that. Nothing, nothing's gonna happen anyway, so.
Yeah, so I mean, that, I think that's, it's, it's, it's a fair number. We were very, very generous last year. But if you do it one year, the next year you give them a zero, that's, that that's wonky. It's all over the place. So, you know, times have been tough this year for everybody too. So we can find out what that number is and figure out how to get to it.
All right, the two percent, um, plus the, uh, plus the insurance, uh, cost would be five hundred and eighty eight thousand two seven.
That's what it's called, Jim.
Six hundred, right?
Five eighty one, two seven?
Uh, two seventy.
That's two percent.
That's a penny.
Two percent plus four hundred and sixty dollars of insurance. And that's the general fund Roden Bridge top, uh, total EMS would be, um, which I think in the EMS, we, we could, we could cover that hundred, basically a hundred and twenty five thousand.
Only EMS alone?
Uh, yes.
That's countywide, right? Just everything, the numbers you just give.
Then have them together and just add.
That's countywide, right?
We gotta get to six hundred. Eight thousand.
Yeah, but there's, I think there's ways to get there.
Seven hundred and thirteen thousand.
If if we go to the EMS funding this year, the one and a half cents on that, so that's eight hundred thousand dollars, is that what that is?
I'm sorry, asking them.
The EMS fund at the top to add the employees. For EMS, on the one and a half cent, my item, we have.
Okay, the the total, but if you added the all three funds together, it'd be seven hundred and thirteen thousand. I'm thinking that the EMS, uh, can be absorbed within the the one and a half cent.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, even on the one and a half percent, um, that's a big chunk for one year. We we set aside money this year in this year's budget for, to do something with EMS. We didn't put it on the tax rolls, but it's, but it's a one-time money sitting there. Could we not fund fifty percent of that salary one year, this year, and fifty percent the next year and cut that into three quarters of a cent this year and three quarters of a cent next year?
So you're, if I'm understanding correct, the one and a half cents, yes, that would not need to add an additional one hundred and twenty five dollars, I mean, a hundred and twenty five.
No, I'm saying is, rather than say a penny and a half on EMS right to the tax roll to pay for them, three quarters of a cent to the tax rolls and the other half come from the one-time money in this year's budget to fund it next year.
Like we did with the sheriff's lawsuit last year.
Exactly. Kind of spread it out over, a penny and a half is not, to me, it's not realistic to suck that up and have any hope of a budget. I mean, that's our, that's generally what we, in fact, that's high end of what we do as far as over the no new revenue rate. That's, that's pretty much telling everybody else you get nothing this year.
So if my understanding, uh, 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 one cent to the EMS, the half cent to the general fund and fund the operations in EMS over a two-year period, kick the half cent down the road.
I would kick three quarters of a cent down the road, if that money's there. That's about three quarters, it'd be about four hundred thousand. Is that right? Six hundred, I'd advise.
Certainly, you can move the money down the road, if if that's what you're asking.
I wanna, I wanna, I, I, and you know, this is, like we said, you can't incrementalize putting an EMS staff on board. They they gotta come at one time where they're not, it's not useful until they're all here, but you can incremental incrementalize the money coming to them and say, okay, how much can we go to the general fund and get from that one-time money that was in this year's budget? Because we're not gonna buy, we're talking about not buying an ambulance out of this money, or we're talking about using ARPA money for that, and even some of that may just be a a remount. So there'd be money there too. So that's what my thought is, lessen that load on the EMS on the tax rate and, um, spread it out over two years. And if you can, if you can do a three quarters of a cent, four hundred thousand dollars, two, four, six, or that's two thirds, whatever that half a million, whatever that number is, if we got it, I would much rather do that and give our people a prayer that they can get something, because if we do this cola and a penny and a half, you're talking two and a half cents and that's, that's tough. And and that's with nobody getting nothing. Zero.
Certainly, um, when you postpone money down the road, it certainly will affect your budget down the road.
Yeah.
And in fact, part of the reason general fund, um, is hurting somewhat this year is that four hundred thousand dollars last year was pushed to this year. So if you take part of this cent and a half and apply it to your general fund and apply part of it to EMS, then that does give you whatever you get your four hundred back plus a little bit of the tax rate. So if you're wanting to stay at one and a half and put part of it in EMS fund, part of it in general, that's certainly an option the court has. But it is pushing it down the road.
It does push it down the.
So the only heartburn I can get out of it is that you get the budget like we did last time, and and I'm not too.
I hear.
From this, but you, you get the budget and then you look at this bottom down here where she had the dying, uh, two jail, the the sheriff's deputies, and it was the deer in the headlights. Well, everybody done forgot about it. You know, and that's something that.
Yeah, I'll be come back.
Yeah, yeah, that's something that you're taking away. And like we said, you are kicking it down the road. You just have to be real careful about what you kick down the road.
You are, but we won't, yeah, but we won't be here next year with, uh, an eight hundred thousand dollar expenditure as your first bill.
No, no, I I mean, I get it. Don't don't get me wrong. You you know, it's definitely an option.
Yeah.
And something that we're gonna keep it down that we might have to look at.
Yeah, and there may be other things, you know, in there. I don't know, um. Do we look at excess? Any any excess salary money out of other departments for like sheriff or jail or EMS? Do we have, do we, do we project that forward? And say you're, you know, you've had, I like, I know sheriffs had four or five vacancies all year, jail probably three or four, or EMS continuously has five or six. So are there, is there money there that's gonna not be expended? And if it's not, rather than just roll it into our reserve at the, you know, when it closes the books out, I would, I would see about committing that, because it's.
Something that's already built in the tax.
It's already there, absolutely. So.
All right, when we're dealing with one-time money ongoing, very, very big difference.
Sure.
Yes, there is money that is not being spent in certain departments' budget. And when we do the budget, we estimate based on what they spent the first eight months of the year. We estimate based on that, knowing how many vacancies are there. We project our best guess of what we think they're going to spend this year.
Mm-hmm.
It does come up in the available funds, and then that is how we fund one-time expenditures is money that's left over from their things in this year that we project it's not going to be spent. That gives us money for the one time that we have next year. Um, I am uncomfortable, uh, budgeting for ongoing expenditures in a current year unless there's specific, uh, plan that the court knows they're not budgeting. they're not budgeting for that expenditure this year, and that it has been moved down the road, but it will come back next year. So certainly the plan, we have a healthy fund balance in EMS fund. So the plan to build, uh, the new, uh, surface, uh, into a, a two-year tax rate plan, certainly very, very doable. It's, it's a plan that the court has, and, and certainly logical and, and can go. Chances are, uh, from what I'm hearing, where the process is now, we may not have all six people and a full vacancy when we start next year's budget. So we may not need all that next year.
That's a thought. Otherwise, like, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You, you said that y'all figured out the one-time monies, how much, how much we're gonna have this year to spend on one-time money?
Uh, right now, when, when we go to general fund and look, I think there's, uh, about seven hundred there. You, on the one-time money, what, basically what you need, you've got?
When will the appraisal district have us hard numbers?
The, uh, the statute said, uh, basically says they should have something to us by, uh, July twenty-fifth, or as soon thereafter is practical, and they cannot give us those numbers until certain criteria are met.
Yeah.
So, and that number is normally dependent upon the number of, uh.
Appeals.
Appeals that the taxpayers make, so.
Possibility the next court will have the numbers.
It's as possible, but even when we have the numbers, we won't know what the NNR rate is, because once the numbers are done, then the, uh, then the software comes into play at the appraisal district, and they begin calculating these numbers. So, uh, generally, this time of year, and we start meeting weekly, so that as we get those updates, the court gets the updates, and, uh, then you know. But you won't know, we won't know the NNR rate probably too close to the first of August. And then we have until the fifteenth to get it filed. So in this part of the budget, generally, you're looking, uh, the court's looking at the things that they feel it's necessary to be filed, uh, with the intention of hoping to say within a certain number of the effective rate. So, uh, court's saying, we'll go one and a half cents over that known new tax revenue, revenue rate, we'll go one point seven five. And then the difference between the essentials that court has identified and what that rate is, is paid for out of fund balance, with the understanding it will need to be billed in the tax rate next year.
Okay.
Yep.
Not gonna say I agree with it a hundred percent, but.
And kind of circle back to the sales thing, we had talked in our meeting about the, the one company out in our precinct. Um, that ESD one has, they've contracted with the company to, to check their area. So they're gonna raise, they'll be raising that flag and reporting that, and I'll keep track of them.
Said he wants to do the same thing.
Oh, they do? That's awesome. All right. Right, anyway, so that we, we should, we will know something, I don't know, what is, there was, when we talked about it last meeting, a garbage company, home office is Austin.
Like that.
So if they, if they raise the flag on that company, and they say, hey, you're not paying the ESD, I'm sitting in that same chair, Michael, who, who else aren't you not paying, you know? So what I'm hoping is they're not sending it all to the county, we gotta give it back. I don't want that. I wanna say it's going to Austin, they have to give it all back.
We don't want to give it back.
We don't want to give it back, so.
And the one thing I would say about the two hundred thousand in road and bridge, one of our fastest growing expenditures is road material.
Absolutely.
So not to do that this year is absolutely kicking it down the road.
I would say no. I can still put a mark back and deal with it, but.
Mark back, we'll save it for the last.
Can we let Stacy have a couple minutes, so they can get out of here?
Yeah, but I, I do agree with, with Bill, this year, uh, hopefully we'll have the six million dollars in grant money.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll have the FEMA money, so there will be an influx of cash coming in to road and bridge.
Mm-hmm.
And the projects will definitely be there, so.
And we just talked, we talked in this court about thirty-five thousand bucks apiece this twenty-five minutes ago.
Yeah. Stacy.
Stacy.
I thought I was on.
About one point two.
On the agenda, but I appreciate you. I know that y'all are looking at, um, our funding, and I wanted to just remind you, first of all, you're getting invited to our appreciation dinner, and we'd like for you to all be there, um, so that we can recognize.
That would.
Um, yes, you did, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Somebody had to be laughing. Bible says.
Thank you, thank you.
But I wanted to remind you of what, you know, what we're doing, we are, we are the only ones taking care of senior adults. We do home delivered and congregate, we do the entire county. We are going to grow that. We do have several funding, um, things, and I appreciate, um, Judge Decker and Judge Christian for, um, looking into HACC. And yes, we are budgeted to have an increase there, but not everybody goes under HACC. So if there's disabilities and they're not sixty, then HACC won't take them, so we have to have funding that allows us to do. In addition, we cannot get funding from Texas, the county does not fund us. So we need you to be funding one of the, we need, I mean, that we get, which is pretty significant as well. But more than that is you need to realize that we partner with you, and you partner with us. So we were asked to open, um, shelter during freeze, and did. We were asked to transport people recently in the floods, and we did, because we have a van, we worked to do that. And then just last week, we were asked to shelter for oxygen-dependent, um, seniors that were coming from the hospital, so the hospital could open back up their beds. That actually didn't happen, because they got their electricity, but we got there at seven in the morning, and they had their electricity overnight, so the hospital had worked them to home, which was great for them. But I want you to know that your OEM is working extremely well, and they work really well with us, so does the sheriff's department. Um, and anytime we have well checks, so not only do we give somebody a meal, we are checking on them. And if there's a problem, we contact their emergency contacts, their family, and if we have to, we call them in county. So we have saved lives that way, but it is not just a meal, it is, it is so much more than that. So again, we couldn't do what we do without you, um, and I want you to know that you're a part of that, and we know that we're a team. So, um, again, the fact that you are on that board and watching from that perspective is great, it's only one of our funding sources though, so we do, we still, just. I just wanted to know that, and I want you to show up.
Hey, we, we do appreciate what y'all do, and I'm getting closer to being a senior every day, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In our current.
We're closer to thinking.
Uh, we have fifteen thousand budgeted for the segments.
Yes, it's in there.
And thank you, Christian Booth, I mean, he had, he had let me know, I just was behind on, I don't follow that many emails that long, just letting you know.
Thanks, Stacy. Okay, so we're, we're, let's settle the employees, where are we gonna try to stay?
Yeah, good with two, plus the cop, plus the health insurance?
That, I think that's fair.
And that's, that's seven thirteen, Patricia.
Yes, sir. For everybody, for.
That's countywide, huh?
Yeah, that's countywide.
That include like the, uh, the bunch at Tam Road out there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be all.
Yeah, I couldn't say the name of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we only do a portion.
So if we do the two percent, that's based on the current salary. That's gonna make that number higher for some employees, not so much the ones that are on the photofold. If we do an amount across the board, it may be more fair to those that don't make as much as the higher ones. Just a thought. And that may make the number a little less than the seven hundred.
It does, but it, it miscreants the whole salary study we done, but I, I don't disagree with what you say, but it, it.
I mean, the whole point is the lower level employees, so, just thought.
Oh, I don't disagree with you at all, I've attended it last time and time before and everything else on that, but, you know, the ones that need the help the most are at the bottom of our list and, uh, anyhow.
Well, we have a number, we have seven hundred and twenty thousand dollar number, we can, when we get down to the number, we can have a later discussion, and we kind of know what the number is now, anyway.
Okay, I can move forward now for now. Since we have a number.
There you go, we have a number.
Okay, all right, we have a number, let's talk about the funding of that.
I'm doing the EMS deal, start off with a piece of that number.
Yeah.
Whatever, fifty percent of that EMS.
Hey, you ever done a court, can I call you?
EMS cost to put him on board with, the one and a half cents on the tax rate. So, cut it in half, you get three quarters of a cent.
So is it the consensus for to, uh, of the one and a half cent tax rate that, uh, increased, we talked about over NNR, the portion that it would take to fund, um, the two plus the insurance, uh, countywide would come off of that and go to the general fund, and then the balance would, uh, and EMS would move forward to be funded next year. Set the consensus.
I can tell you that I ain't against it, but I can tell you also, I don't like it. I don't like it. We're in that spot today because of what we did last year.
Well, I mean, the easy thing, if I was wanting to take the gut hit, and I'm, I'm more than willing to do it, you just tell the folks, we need, we need a penny and a half. Uh, you know, we're gonna, a penny and a half of our tax rate is gonna be EMS this year, and then we build on top of it, you end up at three cents above a known new revenue, and you can do a budget. If you wanted to say that out loud, and I, I certainly am, it's just one of those things. If you don't wanna make that speech, then you gotta circle back.
Or.
Move forward, I'm good with it.
Or you, you say what, what you're willing to do for general fund in addition to that number. Are you willing to do a half cent and then?
How, how about we put, put the salary in, go through all this and figure out where we're at on how much we gotta increase, if it's three percent, three cents, or eight cents, and then we go back and whittle down to where we're all comfortable with our tax increase.
But I'm definitely fine with that, yeah.
All right, so, uh.
Yeah, good for us.
All right, let's not ponder on what, how much we're gonna increase it, let's get down to what, what we need, and this is what we want, and then we'll figure out.
All right, let's go to the supplemental request, and, uh, let's go down the list, um. We're back to what we started with last time, basically, the, uh, one-time, bottom line, you have the fund balance to fund what you need. So those, um, is a matter of going down the list. Uh, five hundred thousand for contingency is in the budget. Here is an election year, we'll probably need about um, as one-time money. Uh, then we've got, uh, we had two, uh.
New requests.
Service organizations, ten thousand for the safe house, uh, five thousand for a time for re.
But let's talk about the safe house, I, I've been in law enforcement before, and those folks, I could support them, because I know what they do, and people need a safe place to go. I don't, I don't have no lot of details on it, I really hadn't talked to the lady, but it's on here. And if there's anything I would ever support, it would be the safe house, because I've had people there. I've had family, family members.
It's just one time.
You know?
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't disagree, I mean, you get a lot of women and kids that come through there, and, um, you know, it is.
It's, 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 it's a good program, if they need help staying in business, I don't mind helping them.
I'm on the, I'm on the board there, so.
You're on the board.
So can we move that ten thousand over?
So I'm not commenting.
To included. Brandon, good?
I'm good.
Okay.
One-time expenditures, absolutely.
Time to read.
Time to read, she's presented, Ms. McMichael's presented several times, and it's a, it's a pretty small one, and the improvements that they have made, and they're still trying to make, catch up from the COVID kids that stayed home with the school books. And this five thousand is gonna go towards the, at the end of school year, they give kids a backpack with five or six different books in them, so the kid gets it, and then the family gets them at home, and, um, if y'all recall, about a year or so ago, they came in at a presentation and said, our school district was like one of the top ones in the state as far as reading improvement levels, so.
So I will tell you, some of that money that we get from the unclaimed properties can go to youth education.
That's awesome. But that's a funny.
So when we get that, I don't know how much we're getting, but last year was forty grand. Some of that money can be allocated to pay for that kind of stuff.
That would be awesome.
What do we usually use it?
It goes.
To the college.
Yeah.
And they do their programs with it.
It's only five K, we could carify it out and get.
I'm not against it.
So, you know, instead of just sending everything over there, pay for stuff that we know stays here and help fund it.
I'd be fine with that.
Okay.
So this would come from, okay. All right, um, I didn't hear a yes or no on the election cost.
I don't see how we have a choice.
We have an election, what, every two years, basically, is it always forty thousand every time?
Uh, pretty much.
Could we get to where it's twenty thousand a year ongoing, we just do it, and then we just increase that, so we kind of carry? I know it starts, well, I guess it starts over, so we have to, or could we move it over as a project and fund it that way?
It's not me doing it.
Not me, no, I'm talking about, I'm talking about maybe do it this year, because we, because we have to pay for it, but going forward or something. Next year, we don't have an election, so could we put twenty thousand in a project, then the year after that, it's only, it's only twenty, it doesn't sound like much, but that's two charities that we could have funded if we, if we do it twenty thousand every single year, instead of forty every other year. Kind of make it a.
Work that in the tax roll next year, and we're not.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll pay it one time this year.
Yeah, and then pick it up from there twenty other times. And just add money to a project account from the, um, tax roll.
All right, um.
Remember that next year.
What's your job?
Patricia, I know.
We'll remind Diana.
None of us remember it when we walk out the door, anyway.
We do one-time expenditures every year for the toast.
Yeah.
You know you're gonna buy them every year.
Yeah, yeah.
That really should graduate over into the.
Into the tax rate, it's like, it's like our six hundred thousand that we do, but it's when your tax rate, right now, it's max.
Still sticking a lot in the tax.
That's what I'm saying, you can't do it, you can't do it, because we swallow, everything else gets swallowed up on the tax rate before we get to those, so.
Yeah, and, and the things like, we know, we budget for a hundred percent of salaries.
Yeah.
We're not gonna, we're not going to spend it.
Yeah.
So theoretically, you're budgeting, you're budgeting a hundred percent, but you're going to end up with part of it anyway, and those.
Yeah.
Fund those things you have to purchase every year, like this hundred thousand.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, then we had the replacement bucket truck.
I don't know, I'm ready for that.
I can't do that one.
I'm out.
Let's leave that one out.
Well, and, and he was, just to kind of go back over that, he, he doesn't have a bad plan, you know, his plan was to sell the one he's got and reinvest the money. So it, it may be something, unless we're looking at keeping it.
But we use it occasionally, we don't use it often, but we use it a lot the last three weeks.
Yeah.
We use a bunch of it, you know, on that, I would almost rather have him get either, I mean, you can rent one of those little gizmos.
Yeah, we had talked about that.
Or, or a bumper pool or something like that, that he could.
Yeah, you've been up in one of the bumper pools, Bill?
Oh, yeah, they're scary as hell, I don't, I, I was fifty feet off the ground, I like a little baby in the bottom of that.
We talked about, you know, giving him five, six thousand dollars extra.
Yeah.
In his, in his budget to rent a little man lift here and there, whatever he needed, as he needed it.
The biggest concern was that driver's license, right?
Right, yeah.
He can't drive it. So basically, what, what he does is he'll get one of us to drive, which is no big deal, you know, at all, um, we don't mind at all, um, but the availability of it, so, uh, you know, that thing's got some age on it, it's been here a while, and you're putting somebody, the, the thing about it is, is it really needs to be.
It's supposed to be inspected.
It's supposed to be certified.
It does, and that, and it's not, and that, and that's kind of, I was kind of thinking, he said he might get rid of it, it might be, the same logic might work for us, a few times, we need a lift to just go.
What if we sell it and see what we get?
I'm game for it.
Yeah, well, I mean.
And we know we're not.
That, then he can reinvest the money.
Yeah.
Right, and then he comes back and say, hey, I only need.
Yeah.
Fifteen thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars to buy this one.
Yeah.
It's a little easier than biting fifty grand.
Yeah, maybe forty-five thousand.
And then I.
Then you've got the option to, you know, like, you know, here, here's your money, you know, we'll, we'll set it aside and do something next year with it.
Yeah, because we don't love this truck either, it's got, it's got some.
Yeah. Well, and, and like I said, if, if it was kept up with a certification and everything, I, I, I'll keep it. But, but we're not doing that, we're not doing that, and you get somebody up in that thing sixty, seventy foot, it hurt.
Yeah.
And, and so basically, no, as far as built in the budget, but could be funded during the year with projects.
Yeah, I could, I could see that happening, yeah, I can see that happening.
All right, um. Alright, um the this one, uh the central district attorney's uh laptop computers. That needs to go into the one time included.
I'm all in on Quentin.
Uh I think that that was the policy that's going to be done now.
This year's budget, yeah, I'm just gonna pull it up.
The replacement Tahoe, he gave a presentation for the uh. The, that was.
Durango's.
A Durango, um I did, I did not change the number there, so I'm. I was thinking he said in the sixties, but.
Yeah, I would, I would leave the number the same.
Put on the car, of the Durango or whatever, yeah.
Or on the vehicle, I mean, the vehicle model is, yes.
So I visited with him a little bit about that, because I I got. Forgot what we had done, so he has, and if I remember, I'm telling this right, he has two coming. From previous budget.
Oh, one.
Um so that will actually put him in very good shape for a long time, I would think.
Would put this one with it.
Yes.
Yes, he's gonna be good. And you gotta remember the.
We're not paying for all that.
No, we've already, we've already accumulated some money for it anyways.
Yeah, from the school.
If I remember right, the number's thirty six, that they weren't put towards it.
I don't know what that number is, Brandon, that's probably about right.
I think that's what it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So really, we may only be out thirty grand.
Yeah.
On a seventy thousand dollar purchase.
But this would put him in good shape for a very long time, yeah.
Well, one of them is deputy that runs a lot, it'll get more, but yeah, in general, he's gonna be in good shape for a long time.
I think they'll, they'll all be in pretty good shape.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that for now.
Yeah.
Okay, the uh. The two mobile radios, I don't remember much of the discussion.
So I visited with him about that, um because I wasn't for sure, they're in car radios, um they're, they're not. Probably able to take the encryptions, and so that's why he's asking to replace.
I don't see where we have any choice on that.
Do we, we don't have, we don't have eleven thousand hiding out in the ARPA fund somewhere? No, even with this family list that we're on, we're probably not gonna buy out of the ARPA funds.
Uh the ones out of ARPA are already on order.
Are they? I thought we had one left, or in this year's budget, we had one in our current year's budget. We ordered everything, we committed everything, I thought we were talking about.
Three coming.
Right.
Two this year and one coming next year.
And I thought we had, we had talked last meeting about having.
We talked about in this.
And the revenue sharing.
Revenue sharing fund, okay.
No, no, we have that, um the Indian Nation, whatever funds is what we talked about buying. Okay, that's the same thing, okay. It's three hundred.
Which I guess we, we talked about that last.
Yeah, we did.
Now, what we do have in the, the interest earned on the ARPA fund. There are uh some significant funds there that uh will, can be transferred to general fund, the projects fund. Or whatever, when we get there, but uh it 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 has our interest, just there's not, you know. Basically, all that's left in the fund right now is the, the two ambulances to pay for.
But we do have some funds from organizations that we funded that bought everything, we're under budget.
Okay, that's what I'm talking about.
Like Good Shepherd Mission has.
Yeah.
Sixteen thousand or something left, we can reallocate those to pay for some of this.
Yeah, that would go right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not saying there's not ten thousand dollars that could be, that we could come up with this year, I mean, we certainly could.
And we may know more later as these things finalize, okay.
But like, good, uh was, so we're picking on, whatever they finalized out for that project.
They wanted two things, um they wanted a van, if I remember right, and they wanted.
That box truck, they got the.
They got the box truck, it came in under, then they had another, another, another request, it was two. They did the box truck, and I don't think they followed through on the second one, and now Dave's gone, so. I think there's, you just gotta have to go back and look and see what their second request was, but I know they had two, and it may have been a personnel thing. Or like, but yeah, I'd have to go back and look and see what that is.
Uh several will pick on it, but I guess the real question was, that project's over like that one. There's ten thousand, sixteen thousand dollars left, are we gonna be done, we're gonna reallocate that money, or is it just gonna sit there?
When we get to the projects fund, uh court will go through that and make those decisions.
Yeah, because if it's left there, we'll grab it out of that ARPA so we can close the art down. That, that was already, do we, do we, you meant we paid that directly out of ARPA, or did we move that over to our project? The Good Shepherd, we moved it out of contingency.
But the projects.
Okay, yeah, so it's not, it's not gonna go away, so that's cool, alright.
Okay, our next group is emergency operations, uh the air walls.
Oh, all that stuff was in on that grant.
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
Yeah, I like to hold off on too much OEM stuff, um at the storm shelter.
And that could definitely be projects contingency, we have sufficient funds uh there.
Yeah. Which one was that? The storm shelter.
Air walls, the, the televisions, the warehouse space, and you got fan. On all three of these. In the county jail, uh there's this people's operating. Okay, that's operating, that's to that one, uh vehicle in planning and development.
Two or three years.
Yeah, he needs.
Come by the vehicle?
Yeah.
Yeah. But it's a one time deal, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, I'm good.
Maybe he needs to dodge Durango, that's fifteen thousand dollars cheaper.
Can we just ask him to be a little bit kind of frugal on their, on their.
Or even decking it out.
Yeah, just, just needs a sticker on the door, and it's a police officer car, so they have to have some stuff, but.
Cage and all that.
I bet we can come in below that number right there, I bet they can.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not with y'all.
No, we're just talking about kind of, what we, maybe talk to Andy when he get ready to order that truck and see what he can do price wise to get it. Basic fellow, so.
Is this for his officers?
Officers.
We can eliminate officers.
In ag extension, most.
We can talk about that too.
I think we need to look at it, I definitely do.
At least the pay scale on it.
Yeah, what do they actually do, I mean, did we justify two of them or not, I mean, that, I think we need to get Andy to justify them to us.
I mean, well, we'll schedule them for next, next budget meeting.
See if we need them.
Be, be careful on the conversation like that, that gets, that gets right back to them, and then that's.
I don't care.
Well, I mean, the, but, but.
But I mean, all I hear is from the public that they're riding in the same vehicle every time you see them everywhere. And it may be because we only got one vehicle, I don't know, but I mean.
I have been getting on about pulling over.
Yeah. So. I mean, I, I think it's something we need to look at.
I would prefer to bring him in and talk to him, and, but I know that, but we just pretty much named names and positions that we're considering getting rid of one, that's pretty hard to somebody here over the radio. If you're that guy.
I was saying, it is what it is. My mouth don't never shut up.
Alright, to ag extension, most of these requests are ongoing, uh they requested. The uh, the one time cost, they requested that fifty thousand for, to be allocated to future building.
It's out this year.
Yeah, this year.
And the twelve hundred is a partnership payment.
We could actually use it.
Five percent salary increase, we're gonna put them.
They're at the two percent, yes.
They were included in the two.
Wha- whatever we do is what, yeah.
Alright, and then we projects fund, that we've had requests for two generators and the, the trash bash cleanings.
We just had a good, solid week of zero power between me and the JP three, and it was a, it was a struggle.
So I've had two weeks where the JP and us are down, we've got a generator on our facility, but. iPhone or anything.
Same with us, same with that.
So your generator won't run JP four? It's one of these big generators, ain't it, that we have in a C container?
It's not great big one like that, it's that uh, I don't know, KBWs, it's, it's for our shop.
Well, I, I'll tell you, um I'm probably out on the generators, I had a, we've got one left, and I'll bring this up, so. Um our communications tire out on one ninety was down, um the generator, well, it wasn't down. But it had the potential to go down, um it uh, it's got a small eight thousand watt generator on it that runs just the equipment. It got so dang hot in there that the equipment was shutting down, and so Larry spent a lot of time out there, they got some stuff wired in. We hauled the extra one that I had at the shop, that that stays in the C container out there. What I would like to do is take that one and move it to the communications tire out there. That way it would power everything.
Question on that, though, isn't it a great big generator?
It's a thirty K W. Yeah.
So can, can we pay for a new generator out there with a partnership with the dispatch, with the city, where they split the payment?
It's all our equipment.
Our equipment.
You talking about the communications tower, or are you talking about a generator for central dispatch?
No, ma'am, for the communications tire, if the communications tire goes down, then there's no reason to have dispatch.
So the communication tower is county owner, I mean, only it is not the dispatch.
No, ma'am.
Okay, alright.
But it's, but it is privately owned.
It is privately owned, but the equipment on the tire is ours, and the generator was ours, and it's too small to run the whole system. Um this one is big enough, you know, I had thought in the beginning that we had that extra one, maybe y'all could take it and do something with it, but I've changed my mind. And.
If you said that equipment was getting hot, that means the ACs don't run in.
AC can't run because the generator's not.
Do we really need a thirty K W to run in the unit?
This is not a window, this is a whole complete air conditioning system.
Okay.
Yeah, this is like your house, basically, and so, yes, it needs, I mean.
Unless we can get by with buying a ten thousand dollar generator and putting out there and putting that one at one of the JP's.
Uh it's, it's eight thousand KW, the one that's out there, I mean, it's a pretty good little old generator, it's not big enough to do that, you know? Um I don't, I don't even know who bought it, it's been out there so long.
What are we gonna get to, and we bought it, I've looked it up, we own it, that eight thousand.
Yeah, I know we own it, I just don't know who bought it, I don't know if the sheriff's department bought it, or honey bought it, or who bought it, but it is.
It's been there a while.
It's been there a long time, and like I said, it's a good generator, it just, it's not big enough to do the whole thing.
What are we gonna get into? I'm gonna point a question, but what are we gonna get to if we supply the whole thing, we know what our goal is, but inadvertently, we're. Doing something for the cell phone.
Yeah, I don't know what else is on there, um I, I don't know to that extent, that's a Deborah question, or a, uh. I know Butchy's got some stuff on that tire too, so that's all wired in.
The mix is that it's, is that it is privately owned.
Yeah.
Privately owned entity, and I, I don't even feel like I, like I know anything about, because I've asked about like our radio station, they have no backup generator, well, theirs is dying.
Yeah.
And we're like, we can't provide them one, because it's private property, and I don't, so if we had one out yonder. I, I don't know how we couldn't make it, didn't strictly just provide us, I don't know, Quentin probably chime in on that one, but it's. It's sketchy when it's private property with our stuff on it, so. I'm, I'm for.
Yeah, all I know is, is I don't know how we're gonna get there, but I know what's out there is not.
There may be two boxes, ours is all in this container, and everybody else is another one.
I agree with you, it needs work.
But I know the electricity goes to us, it's only one meter out there, now, there was, back when they changed all that stuff over, there were several drops out there. I don't know what's on the tire anymore, but I know all our stuff is on the tire. And and.
Just one on one.
Right behind Ray Bow and him, the house.
Yeah.
Alright, so the, the choice here is that uh this money would have come from the. Uh contingency that's in that projects fund, that money's there now. And of course, it will be there, the other option would be to transfer this amount of money from the general fund. Fund balance to projects fund, but that fund already has a healthy fund balance, so. Uh we do have two hundred eighty thousand dollars budgeted in the projects fund for uh a generator grant match. But I think I want to be understanding that this fees would not work with that grant.
Yeah, I mean, because Roden Bridge, our JP two doesn't have a generator, we don't have a generator. Anx downstairs doesn't have a generator, where, where do we, DA doesn't have a generator, there's a lot of other priorities too.
I agree a hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah, and and that's kinda along my lines, as you know, I know the JP's, I mean, but.
Y'all can come up here if we have to, or vice versa.
I mean, truthfully, the only thing, Road and Bridge, I know Ronnie put one out there on his because of the bigger fuel tanks, but.
Well, we, we done it, and just for like, Rachel come out there the other day, and that's the only reason we have the generators. To fuel up those folks nine one one in case we have an emergency.
Yeah, we wired our fuel pumps, we can run them off a welding machine.
Yeah, exactly, and same as ours, so, I mean, in all reality, you know, the JP, the, the Road and Bridge barns, to me, are not.
No, barn is.
The barn itself has got a real high.
All my stuff goes to my barn, and then back out, and it's three phase, that's why mine's so stupid expensive, because it's stupid three phase. I don't know if we could get a smaller one and, and split. JP three and me, a separate from my barn, with just some little bit of rigging, because it does just come from my barn, it's just a, a wire. Maybe that's tricky, something that can drag that down to maybe, maybe a half, I don't know, you know, and to be honest, with the budget as tight as it is this year, this is not a do or die thing for them. At all, it's not, in fact, I.
Well, I mean, that Danny's is, we need.
Yeah, Larry, Larry's getting us some, some numbers together on what it's gonna take to put all that stuff together, and uh bring it back to court, but. Otherwise, we would have had that extra one, and, and you know, y'all could have stood strong, or whatever, I don't care, these could be used. And this come up.
But the, the, the JP four uh generator, it really needs to be natural gas.
You got it in town there.
Yeah, we got it in town, I don't know why the generator at all was, was uh ordered diesel, it, it should have been natural gas too, they're cheaper to run, easier to maintain, all that, so.
Well, I thought it was one of them, them ones we got during Rita. Ike, one of them. So was yours.
Yeah.
Butches, so I think there was four or five of them, and this is the last one, the one I'm talking about.
Yeah.
So the one you got's fifty?
No, it's a thirty.
Thirty, I think that one in our office is thirty.
I could, there was two sizes, there was, there was a few big ones, and then there was a few small ones, and I don't remember, I think yours is a thirty.
I think it's thirty, yeah.
Either way.
So put an asterisk by mine, if we get it in, we have this extra pot of mine, I'd be like, alright, but if not, it's not gonna break my heart if it doesn't make it.
And, and certainly, it would most likely be funded out of the projects, let's see which is available at all times.
Okay, alright, so.
No, it's trash.
Trash bash, that's like the most popular thing we do.
That a yes?
For me, for me, that's an absolute yes.
So many people with that.
I would be hung out to dry if I didn't.
Two absolute yeses.
I'm gonna help him on that one, as long as they leave it alone on my side.
We take y'all's trash too, don't worry.
They paying out of their pocket for signs to shoot them down there.
As bad as I don't want to do it, trust me.
Then we need to uh break from the work session to get ready for the.
There we go.
Regular.
That would come in.
We got another line item or two.
Yeah.
Can we just, we'll just break here and then go to the next one, and then come back?
Okay. The uh road and bridge, uh the hundred and fifty to each precinct uh in the one time.
I'll be a yes on that. Yes, yes on that.
Yeah.
EMS fund, um. Uh, a request for a piece of uh equipment, the ultrasound, the EMS district chief.
I think any tool we can give them out in the field to help, especially at that rate, we got, I'm a yes on that.
I'll agree with that.
Your numbers don't match there, just in case, Patricia. That might mess you up later.
Yeah, I'd be up nuts hunting for my four hundred. Oh, yeah. Oh, boy, I'd be up to that. Uh, okay. And so that gets us through uh the one.
Alright, so what do we have left at the end of one time? Anything you have, you have a.
Pretty much whatever you want.
Oh, okay. Alrighty.
Well, and are we gonna go? When we come back, we need to go.
She thinks he's done with one time.
Done with one time? We got one more page to go that we didn't look at.
What page you look?
We've been talking about the capital purchase of an ambulance. We bought. The three used ones. We need to talk if we're gonna remount.
Good grief. I, yes, I am very sorry. Big page. Um. Okay, the, yeah, so we've got the capital purchase of an ambulance with its associated equipment. Uh, tough book, radios, Tahoe. Uh, communications, um laser fish and EMS. Or to see this week.
Yeah, shrink it a little bit, that would be.
Yeah.
You wanna hold off on that till we come back?
Wind it down.
We're gonna go into recess on this meeting. Or resume after the next.
Just reopen?
You do part one, part two?
Within a reasonable time.
Were you calling reasonable ten, fifteen minutes or thirty?
Actually, that's reasonable yours. That's also.
We can finish it in a reasonable amount of time. Let's keep going.
All right, so our EMS capital.
The word reasonable is always hard to determine.
But now this is. Just to be clear, this is the one time discussion we.
Yes. Yes.
It's not gonna be ten minutes.
It won't last long.
All right, so um the EMS capital purchase for the ambulance and associated equipment.
That's when we're talking about pulling that revenue sharing?
Well, that's the one we're talking about, starting to remount stuff. We bought three. We got three more coming.
Yeah.
We have one Fraser. Rachel, right? We have one Fraser here now?
Yeah, we have two.
Two?
One.
No.
Saying the question. Can you repeat it?
Yeah, but, but take out the, the three we've just bought.
Oh, yes.
We had one.
It's at Ford. It should be.
Right. So we got the flooded one, the three we just bought, and three more coming. That gives you seven Frazers, right?
Okay.
And then New Waverly has two Frazers that they remount, right?
I guess, yeah. That's whatever they do with them.
So our seven, we're gonna try to put six on the road and we start remounting those and we pick up another one here and there if we need them as a reserve. Can we, can we take and start remounting two ambulances for the price of that one? And still save a little money? Is a question.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think so. We have, we'll end up with, like you say, with four, four brand new ones.
Right.
And three very nice, three or four very nice, like it's the rest.
They'll be brand new with a new cab under them.
Yeah. So, do we need?
We, we need some quotes from Fraser saying.
Waiting on a quote from them. Their offices were down all last week, so I'm waiting to hear about.
That's where we just kind of put that asterisk and if it comes in at three hundred or with truck and a remount.
So the quote that T S D two just got done and they're putting new floors, putting new locks for the locking part of it. There, I mean, they're going all out, full paint job, everything. It was a hundred grand to remount.
A seventy.
Plus a seventy thousand dollar truck.
So that's three forty.
So if you put.
All in on two full redone, which is even money.
One, one thing I would say is that on the, the revenue sharing or the, I think it's called L A C D, yeah. We have about three hundred thousand dollars. This, when you look at the. The, the total cost here is about four hundred ninety two thousand. So it may be that rather than using that money for this, that you budget in your EMS fund. Or um vehicles, it could be your remounts, it could be. A purchase of a new ambulance, but you would have your funds. And then we can maybe look for the uh associated equipment. From the revenue sharing funds and keep the vehicle cost uh in one lump sum group, so you have. All your options open when, when you get ready to make the decision whether you're going with new or a combination of used.
Yeah.
Remounts or total remounts, but then um you, they give you time to figure out the direction and, and Rachel time to figure out the best direction.
And maybe in two years, we go back to ordering a new one here and there. We order a new one, remount two, order a new one, kind of change it up.
Yeah.
Keep, keep them, keep those boxes coming if that's where we're going with this.
And we can, we can ask her to put that kind of schedule together, knowing that, that, that we're committed to that.
Right.
That's easy to do if, if we know we're, if we're committed to doing it. That gotta give her some relief as far as looking down the road. That's pretty easy to build a schedule if you know.
Yeah.
That it's coming, so, so.
So what are y'all looking at doing at the E S D down there, Brian? Looking at remounting?
Remounting. Trucks, the chassis already in there. Fixing, send it down there whenever Fraser tells him to bring it.
Is that the red one that runs around town? Is that the extra?
It's the oldest one, I believe. So it's the oldest one that doesn't have the door locked. That would be the nanny, the tooth. Rachel helped me on that. I don't remember the year model on it, but it's.
I don't know off the top of my head. That's a mark question. Honestly, I think that they're, I think. Depending on the older one, but I'm not sure what year.
So the, the older one, the older year model is the one with, that they bought used.
So that's the uh extra one, so to speak.
That's the so-called extra one, cause the cabin chassis they bought four wheel drive. Seems to work better. A seventeen Ford and a thirteen Ford. And the Ford, the thirteen is the one that's getting re, remounted.
Okay.
Again, that's a hundred and, hundred and, and seventy for the truck, so.
Two twenty five or two thirty?
One seventy.
Oh, yeah, I think it's two one three.
And again, that hundred thousand was going all in, pretty all in, fixing all the little scratches and everything.
So probably, so we're talking probably, like I say, a couple hundred grand, and that's not re-equipped. So Patricia, will you kind of summarize that little thing you just said a minute ago?
Yeah, what, what uh, what an option would be is to budget the three hundred thirty or say. Three hundred forty thousand dollars in a, a vehicle account.
Yeah.
To be used for whether you're doing remounts or you're buying a new ambulance.
Yeah.
Uh, the hundred and fifty, uh, the hundred and sixty thousand, budget that as part of those special funds. Uh, for that, and then of course, tough book, you just budget in equipment.
Yeah.
Radios, we budget in equipment. Uh, the Tahoe, if. For uh, uh, Alex, we'd be budgeted in our equipment. And then uh, it, the, all the equipment we would budget in a lump sum and then as Rachel comes back for their plan, visits with court. You've got the money budgeted and then what you use it for uh could be determined at that time.
Okay.
I would also recommend that we uh budget uh a special one time contingency for. Repairs and that sort of thing, so that we know we have the money to do the repairs we need. And all of that would come out of the EMS fund balance.
What repairs are you talking about, just them?
Uh, just general, I mean.
Like they didn't have. They had the budget transmission the other day. Give them a little pad over there. We bought three used ones. So we just put them three used ones on the street.
Yeah.
We need to up it.
Yeah, and we have, I mean, we have, I mean, ambulance is coming, but they're not here.
Not here.
So I'm thinking uh upcre- uh increase that contingency, they um. It's known that the money's there when uh it's needed, uh EMS can come to court or can allocate those funds.
Rachel, have you talked to Dan any on the laser fish? Do y'all have to have a specific laser fish that's different than what we used to use?
So what we use now is just kind of for storing information. Um. We do a lot of paperwork and printing of the internet and back and forth. Our department is so big, like something that was fully automated, where we can make our own forms internally for training. For performance improvement plans, for recruiting, for applications. We could streamline a lot of stuff. Um, kind of specific to our department.
I'm, I'm gonna make a suggestion. You may wanna check with. Service. Maybe more reasonable and more flexible.
So we can, right now, we could do everything, hold off on the laser bridge block.
And, and on the laser fish program, that is uh something that IT's been looking at for a while. Uh, countywide, we, we've got forty five thousand in the budget now. I think Dan made a presentation last year. Um, and the question becomes, does uh EMS fit well within the model he's looking at? Or do, are their needs different and they need something different? But all of that could be looked at as. What is the countywide plan and how to merge everything?
Cause Rachel just needs a little package. We can make it, just give Dan twenty thousand instead of sixty three to add to that forty five, and we got everything for everybody. That we need.
Well, then you got fourteen thousand dollars ongoing.
Ongoing. Yeah, that's a lot.
I ain't achieving. I'm not sure it's the.
But we use laser fish now.
Yeah.
So we already got something we're paying for also.
We, we should have sufficient money in the IT budget and our long-term planning budget. To cover this, and like I say, if their needs are different and they need something different, that IT money could still be spent for that special.
Yeah.
Plan.
Alright, so I'm thinking we.
Scratch that till we figure.
Yeah, just put that on the side. We can't do the building this year, but we could, I think everything else we could do.
And then the last one is the discussion on the building.
I think that's, that's a capital discussion for coming up.
It won't be this year.
All right, I think.
And then we have a vehicle in there too, right?
Yeah.
Another vehicle.
Yeah, it's a Tom. Okay. Are we at a one time?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I seen that look. We out.
We're done with the list.
The list is done.
We've completed going through the list.
Are, are we gonna slide up and do ongoing? Are we gonna do?
Y'all keep going.
I, I don't know. I mean, I'd say do the, the court, cause I mean, if I was outside, God, wait.
Did we think about how we're gonna end this and start back up?
Should have to shut this one down. Later in the part two.
All right, we're gonna stop this court at eleven forty one.
Recession.
Recession.